Good afternoon. Should I say that again?
Yes.
Okay. Today is January 9, 2024. This is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. It's 3:06 PM. And we'll start today by introductions or announcements. Mayor Protem.
Yes, I have several today. Let's see, let's make a reminder here that the City of Prescott offices and service hours will be affected by the upcoming Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. The City of Prescott will be closed Monday, January 15, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. City offices will reopen on Tuesday, January 16, at 8:00 AM for general information. Call 928-777-1100 or visit prescott-az.gov. The Prescott Public Library in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. The library will reopen on January 16 at 9:00. You can access some library services 24/7 at www.prescatelibrary.info. The Solid Waste Division will be collecting residential and commercial trash and recyclables on Monday, January 15, 2024. Please have your containers curbside on your regular scheduled pickup day by 6:00 AM. Commercial routes will also be serviced on their regular schedule. The City of Prescott Transfer Station will be open on Monday, January 15, 2024, from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Please remember to cover and contain all loads when transporting them to the transfer station located at 2800 Sundog Ranch Road. For more information, please visit www.prescaterecycles.com or call the Solid Waste Division at 928... I'm sorry about that, 777-1116. Sorry about that, Mayor. I need another arm. Last one is, for the month of January, Save the Dells has a display at the Prescott Public Library in the Viewery on the second floor. The display is entitled "A Celebration of the Rocks." It's a collection of beautiful photos of the Granite Creek Dells and some surrounding lands and their native wildlife. Please check that out. It's a beautiful display. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We'll now have an invocation from Maran Decker with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, the Thumbbut Ward, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear Father which art in heaven, we are so grateful to be able to be gathered here today. And we're so grateful for the opportunity we have to live in this beautiful city. And we acknowledge thy hand in establishing this wonderful city. And we're grateful for the principles of democracy that allow us to be able to participate in the decision-making process of all the things that affect this city and those residents that are in it. We humbly pray that thou may bless that thy wisdom, thy understanding, and thy compassion will be with us today, that we may be able to build bridges and be able to have understanding and to be guided by thy Holy Spirit in ways that we will be able to help the city with whatever is needed. We love thee and we're so grateful for the opportunity we have to meet together. And we humbly pray that thou may bless each and every one of us. And please bless the council members, that they may be blessed with wisdom and understanding and compassion in all the things that they decide. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in pledging allegiance to our great republic and this beautiful flag that represents it. All right, we'll start the meeting with a roll call, please.
Mayor, good.
Present.
Here.
Councilwoman Freeworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Gambocchi.
Here.
Councilwoman Montoya.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
All are present.
Very good. I'm now going to read and present a proclamation for Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. Is there someone here to accept this? Well, being a child of the '60s, born in the '50s, certainly Martin Luther King's efforts throughout the '60s are something that I recall very clearly. So this proclamation is for the Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service, which will be next Monday, January 15, 2024. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service is intended to empower individuals to put their love into action in pursuit of real solutions to social challenges within our community, to listen thoughtfully and through nonviolence, move us closer to Dr. King's vision of a beloved community. And whereas this day is intended to honor Dr. King's legacy by meeting his call to treat others as we would like to be treated, understanding the injustices suffered by others while still believing that we can conquer evil and injustice. And whereas Dr. King's life reminds us that unconditional love and unarmed truth will triumph over evil and injustice because only love can drive out hate. And whereas Dr. King taught us that by standing up for what we know to be right and speaking uncomfortable truths, we can align our reality closer with the ideal enshrined in our country's founding and the documents that all people are created equal. And whereas Dr. King's dream for these teachings will lead us to continue working to make that dream a reality and to promote our commitment to his dream by keeping our city free from all forms of discrimination and injustice. And whereas days of service help nonprofits find support for their programs and raise awareness while providing individuals with the opportunity to engage with their fellow citizens, thereby building new connections. Now therefore, I feel good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, to hereby proclaim that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday to be a day of service in Prescott and call upon the people of Prescott to pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. King through participation in community service projects on Martin Luther King Jr. Day and throughout the year. In witness thereof, I have hereto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Prescott to be affixed this ninth day of January 2024. One of you want to make a comment?
Sure. Hi, I'm Jim Halbling. I'm the coordinator for the Martin Luther King Peace and Justice Committee. Got several of our committee members here with me. We want to invite everybody to participate next Monday, the 15th. We're going to have a march around the Courthouse Square that's going to start at Prescott College. The gathering should start around 9:30. We'll leave Prescott College at 10:00, march around the Courthouse Square. We'll end up at the Prescott United Methodist Church at 11:00, where we'll have a celebration of Dr. King's life. And we'll have several speakers and musical acts. We'll have a children's program for the first... Or, I don't know, we might have had one in the past, but the first time in a little while, where we'll have opportunity for kids to go to a separate room. And we'll have activities set up by our Prescott High School Student Council. And then as part, after the celebration is complete, we'll also have two breakout sessions where we'll have the keynote speaker and our spoken word speaker available to discuss what they brought forward during the celebration and to answer any questions that anybody has. Arizona Serve is also going to be offering four different service activities during the day, and you'll have an opportunity to sign up for that as well. So we hope to see everybody there, and we expect it to be the best celebration ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
I just want to say I'm new here. I'm a graduate of Prescott College, but it's been like 10 years ago. And so I'm returning here now to live. And just to see that this is happening here in Prescott is really important. So I just want to thank you, Mayor, for reading the proclamation and for just having this community. It's really important. Thank you.
All right. And as the mayor makes his way back up here, I will go ahead and move us on to our next item, which is our open call to the public. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing the council on the same topic only four times. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on this topic. And topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. I do have one comment card today, and it is from Tony Hamer.
Thank you very much.
Probably need to turn the microphone around. Sorry about that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I see today three items on today's voting agenda relative to the topic of roads, roads here in Prescott. Not only the roads that we have, but also the surfaces of those roads. And this has been an area that I've spent time with the city manager before on. As a city, we spend over $33 million on roads. And as everybody in town knows and mentions from time to time, they don't like the road surfaces. Now, a year ago, we were talking potholes, but I'm really talking about roads overall here. Road technology has progressed amazingly in the last 20 years. I'm not sure we're keeping up with technology. I'm not sure, as we give out contracts, that we actually check to make sure that we have the best available technology. We don't seem to have because our roads seem to last about six years max before they get resurfaced. Yet in other parts of the world with similar climates and other parts of the states with similar climates, they have greater than six years. They're in the 10- to 15-year period. So we have a number of road projects. We're purchasing asphalt. We'll hear about that today. That's going to be a problem in the future because refineries won't be producing asphalt if we have electric vehicles taking over as a major form of transportation. So my point of view here is that we select contractors who guarantee that they're bringing us the best available technology and that we don't look for just fastest delivery and lowest costs with no stipulations for pavement performance and longevity. Let's go for a cycle analysis in terms of our roads rather than just low cost. So I'm asking that council consider that in their strategic and policy-setting role, that they set targets on lifecycle costs for our roads and that we make sure that we're living up to a continuous improvement in terms of roads. So in the vernacular of today, let's move into the 21st century. Kicking and screaming may be, but let's move there because this is a big part of the taxes of the residents of our city. Thank you very much.
That's all, Mayor.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does any member of the council want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Hearing no comments, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through 8F. Second.
We have a motion, a motion in a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, we'll move right on then to Item 9, Liquor License.
Public hearing in consideration for a new Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License application from Iriko Hokiawa, applicant for the Yonsei Japanese Restaurant, location 1355 Iron Springs Road. The application fees have been paid and the signs have been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
Is the applicant present?
I don't believe so.
All right, well, without any comments, we'll move on to Recommended Action.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve Liquor License Number 263591 for new Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License application for Unsu Japanese Restaurant, location 1355 Iron Springs Road. And apologies if I pronounced that incorrectly.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, and Suie's ready to operate. All right, we'll move on to the next item.
Presentation and Discussion from Baker Tilly regarding the Fiscal Year 2023 Audit Results and Financial Statements.
Thank you, Sarah. Mayor and Council, as you know, we spend public monies to run the city. And as such, we take it, we feel it's very important to be transparent and open with our financial reporting of all those funds. So every year, we publish several financial reports on our website, prescott-az.gov. Several of those reports, including our Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, our Schedule of Award, Schedule of Expenditure of Federal Awards, and our Expenditure Limitation Report require review by an independent CPA firm. As such, Brian Hemmerly is with Baker Tilly, is a partner with Baker Tilly, and he is here today to go over the FY23 audit.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, my name is Brian Hemmerly. I am the lead audit partner for the City of Prescott, June 30...
Brian, you're going to need to speak closer to your microphone or nobody will be able to hear you.
How's that? June 30, 2023 Fiscal Year Audit. I have a brief presentation for you. There we go. So we did issue four reports this year. The first report is related to your financial statements as a whole. This is your act for your Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. That report received an unmodified opinion, what's considered a clean opinion by your auditors and for the public. The third, second report was your Government Auditing Standards Compliance Report. This is a report where we go in, we take a look at all the compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, debt agreements, debt covenants, things of that nature. We did not find any instances of noncompliance during the audit year this year, and we did not identify any material weaknesses related to that audit report. The third audit report is related to your federal grants. The federal government requires that whenever you spend more than $750,000 of federal funding, that you receive a separate audit for major programs that they provided you. This year, your major programs were the Outdoor Recreation Acquisition Development and Planning. We had no findings regarding that major program. And the second program that was audited was your Capitalization Grants for Drinking Water with the State Revolving Fund. This is through the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, which is known as WIFA. You had no findings with either one of those particular federal grants this year. As your independent auditor, we do provide reasonable assurance that your audit reports are materially correct. We do not provide what's considered absolute assurance. The difference would be, to provide absolute assurance, we'd have to test every transaction at the city. We don't have the time or capacity to be able to do that. That would be more of a forensic audit. This is more of an audit required by state statute and for your debt covenants and other users of the financial statements that want to make sure you have reasonable assurance that your statements are free from material misstatement. Some items that were required to communicate with governance each year are up here on your slide. Internal control matters. We do look through all the internal controls at the city. We test various controls that we find to be key controls to lower our overall risk on the financial statements. We had no qualitative aspects that we disagreed with on the city this year. You can find those qualitative aspects of your financial statements in Note 1 of the financial report. There were no unusual transactions that we felt deemed needed to be discussed today. No difficulties encountered during the audit with management, no disagreements with management. We are not aware any audit consultation with outside firms. There were no uncorrected misstatements. All misstatements, if any, were adjusted throughout the audit period. And we had no findings other than anything that came up that was trivial or immaterial to the financial statements, in which case management made all corrections with the journal entries. This is some additional required communication. We did not identify any fraud during our audit. That's not to say there is no fraud. It's just that we did not come across or detect any fraud during the course of our audit. You have no going concern. A going concern means that you'll be here one year from today, and I do believe, and the firm believes, you will, the City of Prescott will exist a year from today financially. And that there were no related parties that were material to be disclosed during this year's audit. There we go. Couple of things. Your finance department does prepare your annual financial report for you. That's actually pretty rare nowadays. Most cities and towns actually outsource that to either us or another firm. So you do have a very good finance department that has the capabilities and the knowledge to prepare their own financial report. So we do not have any independence issues regarding that. However, we do have a couple proposing journal entries that we do throughout the audit period. And then we do also help prepare the data collection form that is uploaded to the Federal Audit Clearinghouse website, and that's related to that single audit that the federal government requires for any federal funding over $750,000. The last report, Report Number 4, you may have noticed I didn't get to the fourth report, that's the Expenditure Limitation Report. The auditor general, the state of Arizona, requires that you do not overspend based on a voter-approved expenditure limitation. This year's voter-approved expenditure limitation was $281 million. The calculated expenditure subject to that limitation was $189 million. So the city was under that limitation by $92 million this year. And again, the single audit, the federal audit that we did for the Outdoor Recreation Acquisition and Capitalization of Grants for Drinking Water and State Revolving Fund, both received an unqualified or clean opinion, and total expended during the year in federal grants was $21.9 million. I've got two slides with some real high-level highlights on your financial statements this year. The first one is your general fund. This is more governmental in nature. This is not related to your business-type activities. For the general fund, you did have an increase of $10.9 million. This mainly resulted in your fund balance, your equity. This resulted mainly from stronger-than-expected local growth in your state taxes and your local taxes, your sales taxes. Actual revenues for the year were over $4 million, more than what you would expect Actual revenues for the year were over $4 million, more than what you would expect in your budget. And what you had spent was actually $44.4 million less than what you had budgeted. So a very healthy year this year.
Councilman Montoya.
I have a question about that. Actual expenditures less than 44.4 million, and I think maybe Mark might be able to speak to that a little bit more. Is some of that because we had, we had set aside a contingent fund and didn't use it for debt? Is that?
Absolutely, councilman. That is a big part of it. So obviously, we didn't use that 30 million, so we didn't issue the debt. So that 30 million didn't exist either way. The other 10 million or so that didn't get spent had to do with delay of capital type projects, like delay of replacement vehicles. We put in orders, but the orders hadn't been received.
So those roll into the next fiscal year?
Yes. And that, they roll into the next fiscal year through that eight point, or $10.9 million increase in fund balance. They go on the fund balance and they'll come out the next year as we pay for the police cars, the fire trucks and the various other things.
I appreciate that clarity. I don't, I just don't, I just don't want folks to think out there, think that, oh my gosh, like we, we saved $44 million.
I wish, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, don't get me wrong, I would love for that to be the case, but I just, I don't want the impression to be that. It's good to have some clarity around that. Thank you, Mark.
Well, and I just also, while I'm here, the $4 million increase over revenues, a lot of that was the result of sales tax significantly higher than projection. Last year, we were great, a great year. We had almost 11% increase in our sales tax.
Is that, is that due in part to the?
Great planning of your finance department, yes.
I was going to say, I was going to say historic inflation, actually.
It is partially due to the inflation rate and all that. And also something to keep in mind, for those of you who get to read all the emails I sent out yesterday, I sent out the fiscal year through collections through December, and you will note that our collect, our sales tax is less than a half a percent up this year, so.
Which, again, if you factor in inflation, that's actually a negative number.
Yes.
Okay.
It is. And the other thing that added to that $4 million was the sale of the McCormick Street property. That is, of course, revenue one time occurring.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council member. I do want to mention, just to tack on to what Mark mentioned there, in the act for it's, it's a large document, it's hundreds of pages, but really the four pages in there that the public and all of you might want to take a moment to read at some point, if you have a chance, are pages 26 through 30 of the management discussion and analysis. And it discusses all those changes in great detail, as far as specifically, you know, down to what department saved money on budget this year, whether it's police or fire, and then, of course, the contingency that he mentioned there of the $30 million. So some really great information in there that management prepares for you in management's discussion and analysis, again, on pages 26 through 30. Okay, my last slide here is related enterprise funds. This is your business type activity, so water, wastewater, airport, solid waste. Under government accounting standards, they require that these funds support themselves, that they shouldn't really have to be subsidized by tax money, essentially. For the most part, the water fund this year had a great year, it operated expenses, I'm sorry, water sales exceeded operating expenses by $2.6 million, so you had an overall $4.4 million increase in your equity for your water fund this year. Your wastewater fund, the service fees exceeded operating expenses by $2.8 million. That, again, led to an increase in equity for that fund of $1.97 million. Your airport fund received some grants this year, about $10 million, and that contributed to the large increase of 8.4 million for the overall year so far. And then solid waste fund transfers out of $134,000 to other funds caused a decrease of about $36,000, which is pretty much no change for the solid waste fund. It's pretty trivial to that fund. So that is my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that you might have, or if you have ones from Mark, I'd be happy to entertain that.
Well, thank you very much. It looks like at least last year was a quite solid year for both revenues and expenditures and a remarkable ability to manage those funds.
Yes, yes, Mayor, the council did a great job. And one more thing, as council knows from our budget cycle as we do it, that additional revenue that was brought in, that $4 million, will be part of the budget process this year and will be discussed as the fund balance is allocated to council goals as we move forward.
And I do want to point out that when we approve our budgets, many times we have approved the application for funding from grants and other sources. And in order for us to be able to spend those, if we are granted and receive those funds, we have to put into the budget at the beginning of the year. So sometimes, even though we apply for it, we don't get them. But they have to be in the budget in order to have the option that if we receive the grants, then we're prepared to be able to spend them for the purposes intended.
Absolutely. And, you know, as a government, you're right. If we don't have budget appropriation, we can't spend it. And, you know, we talk some about grants and I, I can talk about this stuff all day, so we'll just do that. But I wanted to point out on Brian's slide on the single audit, you know, we had almost $22 million worth of federal funding that we spent. And, you know, there's sometimes perception out there by, by the community that we don't apply for grants. You know, we do, and we get quite a few grants as we look at those numbers. So, and again, that, all these wonderful reports are out on our website at prescott-az.gov. And if there's any questions, any citizen or anybody have on them, please give us a call in finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Mark. All right, we'll move to item 10B.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for SUP 23-002, a special use permit to allow for the construction of an 80-foot wireless tower next to the existing water tank, a request to exceed the allowed height limitation for the zoning district of 35 feet. Location 3599 Williamson Valley Road, APN 800-20-034S, zoning rural estate, two acre. Applicant Smart Link Communications LLC.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a special use permit application. The purpose of it is to allow for exceeding the height of the district, as you heard from Sarah's rendition of the application process. Just to give you some basic information on location, this is a property that contains a city water tank site along with a communication compound that's for the City of Prescott. It's located approximately in the center of this property. It is south Pioneer Parkway and east of Williamson Valley Road. Just to give you a little bit more perspective of where it is in relation to the two closest Prescott neighborhoods to the south, Southview, approximately 1,100 feet away from the northern boundary of that subdivision, and approximately 4,000 feet away from the southern boundary of Longview subdivision. The proposed lease site is a small area, 30 by 30 compound, is to be fenced with ground mounted equipment along with the actual proposed tower. The antenna structure is currently proposed as a result of negotiations through the planning process at 80 feet in height. The original application came in at 100. Just to give you a little bit of context in relation to that tower, you can see in the red circle, I apologize, it was certainly a thicker circle when I put it together, that is the city's ground mounted equipment and antenna. And then the square box shown just north of that is the proposed location for the cell You can see from this dimensions drawing that from the city's lease area, which is fenced for security reasons, to the fenced area of the proposed cell location is six, approximately 60 feet. It's plus or minus a couple of feet one way or the other. That location is from the exterior fence of the new compound to the exterior fence of the city's water tank site. The proposal is for an 80-foot monopole. This was a second choice. Actual recommendation came from staff to give this option to Planning Commission as opposed to a, what's called a stealth application, which in this case would have been a lone 80-foot tree on top of a mountain with no trees on it. So we proposed, they provide a rendering to give P&amp;Z Commission the option to go with just the monopole. Typically, they are painted a very flat gray color or brown color to help blend into the surroundings. The flat gray generally is the one that's chosen in most cases and is considered a somewhat stealth application. This is just a notice map, just showing some of the distances away from the property lines. We noticed 400 feet out, excuse me, we noticed 300 feet out in all directions beyond the boundary of the property. It effectively touched the neighborhood of Southview and state lands on other properties. So Southview being the closest neighborhood, got notification as a result of this. And we've received a number of comment letters. You had an extensive packet of information from us as part of the agenda packet. I'm not going to go through all of those documents, but many letters of correspondence, opposition in most cases to the location of the tower at this site from some of these locations. We mapped them in order to determine whether or not there could be mitigating circumstances that can be addressed by an applicant to reduce some of the impacts on adjacent properties. In this case, because of topography, generally not, especially given the request and motion by the Planning Commission to reduce the height to 80 feet. I do have a few aerial photos and photos, excuse me, photo simulations that were provided by the applicant that I'll run through pretty quick here. These were locations that were taken from spots where public access is available, so not from anyone's backyard and not necessarily from very far away. Just to give you an idea, and I've tried to, and I apologize, on screen, this is really hard to read. So I know you have this in your packet and you've had access to it. Location presuming the original 100-foot monopole from three different locations. And then the location and photo sim for a 60-foot monopole from these locations. And then we asked them for, what if you tried to get within the existing height limitation for the zoning district plus an allowance of, we call it administrative adjustment, to allow staff to increase the height somewhat. So they chose 40 feet, which is a nice round number, and just, again, to give you an idea of what a 40-foot monopole would look like. The applicant provided us with what are called propagation maps. This is the map that determines where the cell site will provide service, initially showing the service without a tower. And then with the tower, and I have some better pictures, I believe, from subsequent renderings. Green color shows the assumption of an 80-foot tower, the direction of the coverage is to the northeast as well as along Williamson Valley Road and to the north. This is a shorter tower, and you can see that it brings in that coverage area and logically, the shorter the tower, the shorter the range of coverage.
Hey, George, could you tell us the height of each tower in?
This is the 40-foot tower, 60-foot tower and an 80-foot tower.
Councilman Moore, you had a question?
Thank you, Mayor. George, what is the height of the city's tower next to the water tank? What is that height?
It's a different type of tower. It's a girder type tower, a triangular girder. The metal girder part of the tower is 60 feet, and then there's an antenna, what's called a whip antenna. It's a single device attached on top of that that probably adds another 20 feet to the height.
So it's approximately 80 feet?
It's approximately 80, but the whip is nearly invisible at any distance away from the site.
Because of its diameter, so small.
Right. It's a very small diameter. So the girder tower is approximately 60, and that would be visible at a distance.
Is it, I mean, it's currently visible from maybe those same simulation photographs that you showed us? I didn't see it, that's why I was asking.
It's a little, it's a little hard to see, again, given the distances involved with these, but, excuse me, sorry, I'm clicking too fast. So the girder tower is visible from this site. The existing girder tower is visible from this site. It's on the left.
Okay. I just wanted clarification, how tall the city's tower was compared to the proposed tower? Thank you.
There's a difference in elevation to that, that comes into play. The city's tower site is on the same level approximately as the foundation of the water tank, which is about eight to 10 feet above the height of the proposed tower, cell tower at the other location, again, because the cell tower location slightly downhill.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. George, I'd just like to clarify, the existing tower is for public safety.
That is correct.
And we have those towers, they're pretty commonly located in, on other water tanks. So it was already existing along with the water tank, and nobody has a problem, has a problem with that one, right? Because it is, I've driven up there and looked at it, and it's, it's pretty innocuous.
It's been there for some time.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And we do have those towers with public safety communication as well as communication for our water operations at most tank locations.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. George, did I overhear you say that the staff recommended 40 feet as an alternative, but the allowance was 35, right?
The request was for a shorter tower meeting the 35-foot maximum height. There's some allowance that in some circumstances, we can allow an additional three and a half feet to round it out. They did the simulation at 40, 40 feet. So, and that was one of the options that had been brought up during Planning Commission discussions. So we wanted to make sure that there were a number of different photo simulations to show the Planning Commission various heights and the differences in the impact on nearby properties.
But just in the, for the sake of process, so they came back and they, they refused that, and they filed for a variance? Was it through a variance to go up to 80 feet?
No, it's actually what's called a special use permit. So it's a by right application. You don't have to have a hardship or a variance or violate any city regulations to ask for the additional height. You can ask for that additional height for a number of different zoning districts for different types of uses, but for cellular antennas, they're allowed in any zoning district, the SUP process is allowed in any zoning district to increase the height because it's often known that the district height level, again, we're trying to measure the height of a house, is typically not going to allow for the, the coverage that most cell services are, are trying to attain.
Thank you.
And it's my understanding that an 80-foot tower, if it were approved, could be increased to 100 feet without any oversight, review or approval by the council? Is that correct?
That is correct. It is tied, however, to FCC regulations that it is increase in height to allow for an additional carrier to be installed.
Colocation of other carriers.
Correct. It would require, would require building permitting, so there's a staff review of it to make sure it's structurally sound, but it doesn't go back through the SUP process for that additional 20 feet.
If a 60-foot tower were approved, how much additional height could be approved without any council oversight?
It's approximately an additional 20 feet. There's actually two different ways that it's calculated, one by percentage of height, but generally 20 feet per additional carrier.
So it could go from 60 to 80, but not, not higher than that?
Probably not unless you added a third carrier. Generally speaking, we don't see a lot of that additional 20-foot situation. In fact, I can't recall one in Prescott where we've had that situation occur because in most cases, the, the primary carrier, in this case AT&amp;T being the applicant, wants to be on top to have the best coverage of the area and doesn't necessarily want to have additional antennas above. The 80 feet does allow for a lower secondary colocation, still having visibility, but honestly, given the circumstances of the location, the alternative carriers are generally pretty well covered in that area already and probably wouldn't locate on that tower below the top.
Understood. Councilmember Rusin.
So just to get the numbers straight, 80 is actually, if you add another 15, so it's actually 95 is what we would be approving today if we approve it. And also the lease, it's going to be a state lease, so we don't get any monies or anything from it. It's all, all the lease monies are going to go to the state.
That is correct. That is correct. The property belongs to state, Arizona State Land Department. The lease that we have, that we pay the State Land Department for the water tank site, this would be a separate lease, completely separate from the city's lease, and that lease would be directly with the State Land Department. Again, the automatic escalation of the height is not an automatic escalation of the height. It is to allow an additional carrier. So, we may or may not see the additional height added to this tower, again, depending on how many carriers and who wants to go out there. AT&amp;T cannot permit the 80 feet and then add 20 feet to move their antenna. That would, would violate the FCC's regulations.
And I just wanted to clarify, so we're not subleasing to the applicant? It's, it's all at the state level?
It's all at the state level.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
Yes. In fact, I have a couple of items that I would like to address that in some way touch on that specifically. Let me do one more slide before I get to that, though. There were some concerns addressing airport impacts and the location in relation to the airport. It is more than 5,000 feet away from the end of runway of, of any of the airport runways. The location is shown with a yellow pin down there. I apologize, I can't point to it, but it's in the lower left of the screen. You can see the, the display for airline takeoff, emergency one-engine takeoff is well away from this location. So, as far as general aviation operations, it should not affect any of the airport's operations with this location, given its distance away from the airport. There were some questions about...
Councilmember Gumboji.
Yes, sir.
George, I want to go over some plowed ground that you've covered. Can you give us an idea how many cellphone towers are in the Prescott city limits?
You're putting me on the spot to remember, but I would say roughly 25 to 30.
25 to 30. And what might be the oldest cellphone tower?
It is probably, rather than a tower, it's the cellphone array attached to what used to be the broadcast tower, literally right down the street here downtown. Their antennas array attached to an old television broadcast tower that exists on top of the building.
And how long has that been there?
40 years.
20 years?
Yeah, at least.
So, 20 to 30 cellphone towers that have been here 20 years or less?
I, no, most of those cell towers have been here at least 20 years. I'm sorry, the tower here was approximately 40 years.
Okay, 40 years.
40.
How many of those cellphone towers have been extended in height?
None that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Again, location of, in relation to the airport.
Councilmember Rusin, you had a question?
Sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to go back to airport operations. You said this wouldn't affect any airport operations, and I just would like to remind you that our slurry bombers flying out of the U.S. Forest Service Fire Center will be flying. They don't have any particular flight pattern. They can fly anywhere they care to.
Understood.
And so it's important that they're, they're briefed, they have to be briefed at the locations of all these cell towers. So I just want to say that's one of the impacts of this tower. It will impact the, the slurry bombers. Thank you.
That is correct. They would be notified, any type of FCC-approved construction, there's a communication by FAA as well. There were some questions at the Planning Commission regarding the potential for co-locating at other tower locations nearby. The two closest tower locations where co-location could occur, both are AT&amp;T, both contain AT&amp;T antennas, and, and they weren't able to cover the area they're trying to cover from those other two tower locations due to topography. Height of existing tower and tank, this was actually, excuse me, a question was brought up by one of our planning commissioners. The existing communication tower, again, 60 feet of girder tower, and then the top of the water tank is approximately 30 feet to the highest point. There is a slight dome in it that may actually increase that height slightly above 30 feet. Access to the site, I do want to talk about access. There was concerns in the original application, and still in the application, is a requirement to obtain a 20-foot-wide access easement up to the site. Recall, again, the property belongs to the State Land Department. There is a roadway already existing. That roadway lies within an easement granted to the city of Prescott. For AT&amp;T to use it, they need to obtain an easement of their own. So, they would obtain an easement that basically sits on top of the easement that we already have. There is not a new road being created. The existing access roadway up there would be the one used for access for construction, as well as for future maintenance if you approve the tower.
Councilwoman Frith.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions. The first one is, you said there's a current road that sits there. From what I understand and reading the public comments, that road is about 10-foot wide. The applicant would like to have a 20-foot wide road.
No.
So, has the application been changed, and now it says 10-foot, and no need to upgrade it or tear down plans or anything?
Back to what I just mentioned, they're asking for a 20-foot easement from the State Land Department. We already have a 20-foot easement. We only have a 10-foot roadway in it, which is not uncommon. There's no plans to widen that roadway, other than what may be necessary to get vehicles up there for construction, maybe 10 to 12. So, a two-foot width change would be probably the maximum that would occur for construction vehicles.
Would the applicant agree with that? The second question I had related to, what are the concerns about lights on the top of this 80-foot tower? What are the FAA requirements or any other kind of legal requirements about lighting, given the elevation of the top of this tower?
So, I was going to get to some of that. Some of that's unknown. There is evaluation process between FCC and FAA for any extended tower. General rule of thumb from, directly from the FAA's website is light it if it's 200 feet or higher above the point where it's set. So, from the ground where the tower is set, if it's 200 feet tall, it has to have a light. Anything below that's evaluated, and if, due to safety concerns, the FAA can require lighting of the tower. So, it's a possibility that it could be lighted. The proposal before you today is a request for an 80-foot tower. 80 feet, I can tell you from flying in airplanes, 80 feet's awful close to the ground if you're in a plane. So, that, that typically is not going to be the type of structure that would require safety lighting, but again, part of their requirement through FCC approval is to determine whether or not lighting is necessary. So, we don't have a definitive answer, because they haven't gone through that process yet, needing to get their zoning approvals first before starting that process. Leading into that... Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just based on Councilmember Gumboji's comment about the number of towers that we've had in the city and the height hasn't been extended. You showed a map early on, a topo map, and it showed the elevation change in the gradient as you go north. And the location of the city's tower is a good 10 feet higher, the ground level is about 10 feet higher than the proposed structure, which means that the proposed structure would be 10 feet lower at the base, and an 80-feet height compared to a 60-foot would mean a differential of only 10 feet. So, the new proposed tower would only be about 10 feet taller from the distance than the current existing tower.
That would be approximately correct.
Based on the topo map that you showed us. It'd be about 10 feet higher.
Based on the topographic map and the fact that to construct the foundation for this new tower, they will probably level the site. You don't add additional dirt and then dig it out. They'll level the site to the lowest level of the compound that they're proposing. So, a direct measurement from the tank location to the, the south edge of their compound is about a seven-foot difference in elevation, but then lowering the site to make it flat will probably make it about 10 feet, which would change that elevation difference to 10 feet. One of the other things that came up in question during the Planning Commission's review, and I will point out, we, we did in the staff report, but just for the audience today, three different Planning Commission reviews of this. They took their time, they asked for a lot of additional information before making a recommendation. One of the concerns was fall distance to the tank itself. The compounds are 60 feet apart, the water tank is 30 feet inside of our fence line. So, the water tank is at least 90 feet away from the location of the tower, and in fact, the tower, proposed new antenna tower will be inside of their compound, so it's more than 90 feet away from the tank. If the proposal for, request for 80 feet is granted by council, it will place our tank outside of the fall distance, even in a worst-case scenario. I will say that these towers are engineered today typically to fold in half if they fall, rather than fall flat, but even if it fell flat, it's more than the height of the tower away from the water tank. One other thing that came up quite a bit, and we were talking about the airport and operations, was a concern about the potential for aircraft to hit the tower in normal operations. That's an extremely rare occurrence. It does happen occasionally that planes hit cellular antennas. They're far more likely to hit power lines or other structures. And again, at 80 feet above the elevation, you're certainly flying outside of the norm if you're that low in, in proximity to a mountaintop like that. While it's a possibility, the likelihood is rare. For, for those of you who may know something about history, we fought a war in the Pacific against an Asian power at one time who tried intentionally to fly planes into aircraft carriers and only succeeded 20% of the time trying to hit them on purpose. So, the likelihood of something happening here is pretty low. It's always a possibility. There's a possibility a plane could hit our water tank as well.
Boy, that's...
Beyond that, we do have...
Councilmember Gumboji, you have another question?
George, in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, wasn't there some visuals of airplanes and the altitudes they flew and the proximity within this cellphone tower?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we had that information to show. Generally speaking, when you're, when you're not taking off and landing and flying over relatively urbanized areas, I guess the rule of thumb would be approximately 1,000 to 1,500 feet as a minimum, just for safety reasons. You need to be able to recover if something happens if you're a pilot. Being lower than that doesn't give you any time to recover. So generally speaking, flight here would probably be 1,500 feet or higher above. Most of the aircraft flights that we have are training flights, so part of the training process is to teach pilots those minimum safety requirements, and I would expect that most of the flights would be at that altitude or higher. We do have the applicants here who can answer questions for you. They have some additional mapping of their propagation. It's very similar to what we showed you on these maps. If you need that, if you need that, we'll call it up. We also have some additional information, if you need it, on the legal restrictions that have been imposed by the FCC through rulemaking on local government determinations relating to cell tower locations. I think the city attorney could address those if you need, and again, Joe, I have, I have slides that cover that if you need them. And with that, I will, one, one last thing I forgot to tell you. Planning Commission did recommend in favor of this, it was a four-to-two vote in favor of moving this to council at the 80-foot requested height. So again, the original request was 100. Planning Commission suggested they bring it down to 80, and that was the ultimate recommendation to you. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you have. Again, the applicant's here to answer questions you may have, and we can talk about legal restrictions if you desire.
Councilmember Rusin?
Thank you. In our packet, the Federal Telecommunication Act of 1996 is quoted with five reasons why we can't deny the tower, but I would like our city attorney to tell us what the three reasons would be that we can deny the tower. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think just as a brief summary, right now, council's reviewing this. They can approve or disapprove. You can approve or disapprove based on compliance with the Land Development Code. And so the Land Development Code has certain requirements, and I think you probably saw some of the objection memos, and you'll probably hear from people. There's things like aesthetics, the neighborhood that surrounds it, and so forth, and those are relevant factors. I think the important thing that probably George was alluding to, that you cannot consider, that you may hear of, is the idea of potential health damage by frequency, and that cannot be part of your consideration today. So, the analysis really is, and we would show substantial evidence that it relates to the Land Development Code, one way or the other. That's your main analysis here.
Because I'd like to add decreased property values. That's one reason to deny it, and also, it's non-conforming.
Yes, and so the, the idea of the decreased property values, and I, and I don't make any opinion one way or the other on that, the aesthetics, the type of neighborhood that it's in, all of that is relevant in our Land Development Code. So those are kind of three reasons under the Land Development Code to make a determination. So, it's within your discretion to review those things.
I'd like to read a letter dated October 26, 2020, from Judd Simmons, the county assessor, to the Prescott City Council and Planning and Zoning. When unusual or extraordinary circumstances arise, such as high-voltage power lines, heavy traffic, and towers, including cellphone towers, the assessor's office applies an adverse location adjustment for this type of external obsolescence. External obsolescence is an applied form of depreciation caused by factors not present on the property itself, such as environmental, social, or economic forces. Listen to this. The homeowner cannot reverse the loss in value by spending money to repair the issue. And we got a letter from a resident who moved here from Bend, Oregon, and a cell tower went up in his neighborhood, and it decreased his property value when he sold his house by $150. The value went from 600 down to 450, and this is in Bend, Oregon. Thank you. For $150,000.
Councilwoman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. George, I have a question for you about the Planning and Zoning's decision, and I also have a separate question about the cell coverage illustrations you had on your slides. Who are the two commissioners who voted against it? And also, was, was there someone absent at that meeting?
We had an absence at the meeting, excuse me. Commissioner Hutchinson voted no, and I'm drawing a blank. Yes.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to, I was curious. And then, my other question about the cell coverage pictures you showed in distinction of the height of the tower, I, I guess, you know, one of the things I hear about often was these cellphone towers, you know, in argument for having greater cell coverage is that nowadays, more and more people have gotten away from having landlines, and so for people to be able to get a hold of 911, essentially better cell, cell tower, you know, coverage is needed. And so, I guess I'm wondering, and again, maybe the applicant isn't the right person to ask this question, maybe it's more in, in your wheelhouse, but is there kind of a, a middle path where we still get enhanced coverage where there's not dead spots in terms of coverage, so that we can make sure folks are still able to get? Because my biggest concern when I look at these issues is that 911 coverage issue. You know, I, I remember when my wife first, first moved back to Prescott, she was on T-Mobile, and there were times where she'd be in downtown Prescott and I couldn't get a hold of her. So, to me, I want to make sure we're not putting people in a position where, God forbid, something happens and they can't get a hold of some, you know, emergency service.
As far as the cell coverage and the ability, depending on the height of the tower, to provide that public safety... provide that public safety aspect of it, the aspect of being able to get, call 911, 911, or in, even in the case of simply being able to operate from home, COVID changed some of the rules on how we operate, as you well know. One of those things was that many more people work from home and are reliant on better cell coverage and better capacity to do that. So cell companies have been adding additional towers somewhat to address that. I, I think that question of, of coverage is a question for the applicant, and I would defer to them on that.
I'd be happy to hear what they have to say.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it would be helpful to members of council to know why the people voted the way they did. I mean, I'm sorry, I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know what their reasoning was. But could you share with us, you know, the opposition, I mean, the reasoning behind the no votes? That would help us understand.
The chair and the vice chair are here to counsel more.
I was about to announce that, but I promised not to throw them under the bus until necessary. I believe now would be a good time for a chair or vice chair to address that answer, if you would like.
I would like that, if that's okay of the mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Don Michaelman.
Don Michaelman, 861 Spring Trail.
Tom Riley, 142 South Alarcon.
To say why someone voted the way they did is difficult because you're not in their mind. My own self, I looked at this, and there are limited reasons why we can deny a cell tower. And these have come down from the federal government, if I remember right, Joe, on this. And none of these were applicable. It sits on a very large section of land that its neighbors are a water tank and a communication tower on it. So it met the qualifications in my mind. Tom?
I would concur with chairman, and I would add that when the cell towers were first thought about, and a policy was being looked at by council 25 years ago, the, the idea was to locate the towers, cell towers, where there were existing towers and where we had water tanks. And so I'm going back to that. That has not substantially changed over the last couple of decades. So looking at that was one of the reasons why I, and I think some of the others, took a look at it and said, well, you know, that's what the policy has been. That's, and that's, the site is remote. It is next to a water tank, and it is next to cell towers. So it fits pretty much the bill of what the council policy has been over the past couple of decades, and that's the reason for voting for it.
Any other questions we can answer?
Councilman Moore, did you have another question?
No, Mayor, sorry.
Councilwoman Frerworth.
Okay, I was at the first, or maybe the second, planning and zoning meeting. I missed the final planning and zoning, zoning meeting. But I do recall there being lots of discussion about, show me the data. Show me the hard data, not the pretty colored maps, but things that, that are important to that location being chose, and also the hard data related to other locations. We understand that you do not want to be on the other two towers, closest towers. But the question has remained in the public's mind, and frankly, after reading hundreds of pages last night, it's in my mind, as to alternate sites. If not this hill, which other hill were also maybe looked at? And what's the hard data? And I did do enough research all day yesterday to understand that drop call data, drive test data, that's the kind of data people have been looking for. I have not seen it in our package. I don't know if it got before planning and zoning in the final package, but it's the hard data that I'm looking for. When will we get it?
That's where, the applicant, I believe, can talk to you regarding the data that they use to choose the location-
Without disclaimers.
And justify the location.
Yeah, without, it's the disclaimers that's bothering everybody. You're upsetting the neighborhood with lots of disclaimers that the colored maps may not be right. So hence, where's the hard data?
Well, I'd like to make a few comments. I listened to all three of the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, and I have a series of concerns. Let me address your concerns, Lois. We were told that the actual data is proprietary to AT&amp;T, and they're not willing to, to expose the actual data. So these are, these propagation maps are estimates. We were also told that this was going to improve public safety response, and that the city of Prescott, police, and fire didn't respond to their concerns. Well, number one, this city of Prescott, police, and fire don't use AT&amp;T. They use Verizon. So this tower and AT&amp;T's position on this tower is not going to help public safety in our city. The third thing I heard was that there's a gap between the coverage north of this location all the way to that big tower that's on the hill north of Outer Loop. So those areas of Williamson Valley Road, possibly Longview and farther up, are certainly not going to be helped much by this tower. And in my mind, why they didn't locate, look at a location that's north of this tower that would fill in that gap, rather than selecting this as the best option? And the only two other locations they considered were south and east. So either of those locations obviously are not a good alternate location to consider and conclude that this is the best location. I know that Hidden Hills was, when I was looking at their original proposal, they had a emergency egress proposal on a road up there. So they already have other utilities in the area. And to me, why they didn't consider a location like that north of this area would obviously solve their problems about having better coverage. So I think that applies to the least intrusive requirement that the FCC expects to be able to have analyzed and provided. And the proprietary data, I mean, propagation maps that aren't based upon actual data can be manipulated to reach the conclusion that they would like to see. So I think those issues alone make me not supportive of this particular proposal. I think the people that are applying here are not the users of this. They're not the AT&amp;T owners of this, and they're going to be providing, they're, they're just contracted to try to find a location. And I think the analysis that they did does not convince me that this is the best location. I mean, you look at the land both north, east, west, and where it is right now, it's all either state land or Bureau of Land Management land that you couldn't put a residential development on anyway. So they're certainly not helping those areas. So if they want to fill in that gap going north, find a location going north, and don't compare it to something that's south or east, and then say, well, this is better than those. Yeah, they are. It probably is better than those. But that wasn't a good analysis to come up with in the first place. So I just have so many concerns about the legitimacy of this location that, quite frankly, I can't support it. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things I wanted to ask the, the two gentlemen here. I've got right here 20, at least 20 excerpts out of the city of Prescott zoning code, the special use permit. And one of the words I see over and over in here, and I'm going to read one out of the colocation section. It says, "This policy of the code shall be to encourage colocation." Did, did you look into colocation before you started this process?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mark Sawyer. I'm with Smart Link LLC. To answer your question, yes, absolutely, we did. We had limited options for colocation here for both height and coverage that we needed for this particular, for this particular site and this particular project. So absolutely, we did. We covered all of our bases to try to find a colocation. That's the first thing that I do when I've given one of these projects, is I scrub it for colocation opportunities, and there just weren't any to do, to coverage that a nil needed here for our, our frequency engineers. So yes, the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I believe there was a question earlier regarding the propagation maps and the data.
Yes.
And I don't believe the applicants have addressed that.
I'd like to hear that.
If you want to respond to that. I know you responded to the Planning and Zoning Commission and said that AT&amp;T considered that information proprietary, and you didn't have the exact data. So you were looking at these estimates. Do you want to respond to that?
Mr. Mayor, this is Anil. I'm the design engineer for AT&amp;T. I handle the Isla New Mexico market for our new site builds. So yes, like I just before, the data is proprietary. We know exactly where the coverage gaps are, and we don't take the challenge of putting a site lightly. This site costs us, on an average, a site in this market costs us upwards of half a million dollars. So I'm working on about a couple of hundred sites as we speak. So we don't take the, you know, the opportunity and the cost of half a million dollars pretty lightly, but before we decide on looking, putting a site at a location and looking at, and looking at alternate location. From everything I've told, this is a perfect location, and it fits into the city code with respect to, if there's a water tank, there's an existing tower, and then there's no residential nearby.
Councilwoman Frerworth.
I respect that you don't take things lightly, and we don't take things lightly either-
Yes, ma'am.
-in terms of breaking our land development code and giving special use permits. So in the absence of data, I too am having lots of trouble understanding why we would go ahead and grant this special use permit.
Ma'am, the coverage data I provided, that was not the existing coverage data that I provided.
My understanding is what I've seen, which are these maps and what I just got here, and they have disclaimers on the versions that I haven't seen, but other members of the public have seen. And so I have not seen the drop call data and the drive test data to warrant the business case for us considering changing our land development code. So I can only vote on what I see, and what I've seen is in my packet, and what's in my packet is insufficient.
Councilmember Rusin.
Speaking of colocation, when I was out at the site, directly to the east off of, by our transfer station off of 80, Highway 89, is a 100-foot girder-style cell phone tower. Did you look at maybe colocating on that site?
I, I believe we have looked at it, and I think it's off the mountain, though. So the kind of elevation we needed to provide coverage to the highways is not going to be provided from there.
Thank you. I would just like to say, as an elected official, I go by the principle first, do no harm. And in this case, I think there would be a lot of harm to the residents, and they're decreasing property values. And I think that would be a constitutional taking, and I can't support this tower.
Well, if, do we have any other questions or concerns? I think we're ready to-
Mayor, you have 12 public comments, if you'd like to take them.
Yeah, you're right. I think we have quite a few of those.
I was just going to ask, can we hear from the public?
Yeah, let's hear from the public.
Mayor, if I may, before we start, just to address two issues that I noted. Just as a practical matter, we're not talking, or council's not talking about any adjustment to the land development code. It's simply whether to grant a special use permit under our current land development code. And as it relates to reduction of property values, that's, council sits as a kind of a quasi-judicial body to determine that, but that would fall under 2449A1, which is the section that says that you look at, among other things, protecting residential areas and land uses from potential adverse impacts. So those are, I just want to clarify those two things.
Public comment, please.
Hello, Mayor Good. And Mayor Protam can tell me in council. My name is Teri Sapiou. I live at 638 Fillory Drive in Yavapai Hills. So this will not affect my coverage whatsoever, and I also use Verizon like the city. So AT&amp;T's not going to help me either. But the reason why I wanted to speak is that cell phones have been around for 50 years, and since 1999, when 3G came out, they've become very prolific. In fact, right now, there are two cellular devices in use for every man, woman, and child on the planet. Eight billion people and 16 billion devices. They've become so prolific that people have, no longer have landlines to their homes, and they use cellular for everything. So improving cellular reception and cellular capacity is a good thing anytime you can get it. Whether this is the right location or right height for a tower is for all of you to decide. But like Councilwoman Montoya mentioned, it's also a safety issue. And the safety issue that comes to mind for me is the fire disaster that happened in Lahaina, Maui, Hawaii. That was an infrastructure failure, and cell towers are infrastructure. And in fact, that fire was started by an infrastructure failure, and it was exacerbated by further infrastructure failures. And one of those failures was the failure of the cellular system that made it next to impossible to provide emergency notification and emergency communication during the disaster. As a result, the city burned, 100 people died, and it was all totally preventable. So I'm just speaking in general in support of more cell towers wherever they're appropriate to provide not only convenience for the citizens of Prescott, but also for the safety of the citizens of Prescott. Thank you.
Deborah Miller.
Deborah Miller, 1062 Yavapai Hills, Prescott. This whole cell tower application really isn't complicated. The big telecom industry has only their interests to protect, but you are charged with protecting the best interests of the community. The LDC and the SUP codes actually give you all you need to deny this permit. Now, the application should be denied because granting it would violate both the requirements and the intent of the Prescott codes. This cell tower affects an area that's densely populated, it's well-established for decades. Many homeowners and residents have spoken up against it. None have spoken for it. Do you have proof that this is harmonious? Do you have proof that this, there will be no significant negative impact? This is the Prescott SUP code. You can deny it based on that. And do you have that proof? Do you have proof that property values are not going to go down? Do you have proof that there really is a significant gap in service, and the proposed tower will provide the least intrusive means to remedy this? Smart Link, I agree with you. It has way too many disclaimers with their propagation maps. All I read were disclaimers. I got no confidence from that. In fact, at the first hearing, another set of propagation maps was presented, and you, the P&amp;Z was charged with comparing the two maps. Very different. That never was done, by the way. Do you have proof of valid, accurate maps as required by the FCC final rule? You have to follow FCC guidelines. Why are you going to ignore an FCC final rule that states that that hard, that those propagation maps have to be validated according to the FCC final- propagation maps have to be validated according to the FCC final rule? They haven't been, so they're invalid. Now, they actually provided zero alternative site analyses when asked many times. That site analysis is more than just a statement of, this is, this doesn't work. You have to have an analysis, including what Mark Sawyer just said regarding colocation. He said, "Oh, no, we couldn't colocate." Really? Do you have proof? There's no proof. No other site could possibly be better, is the statement that they said. It's not an analysis. They provided zero proof that the original 100-foot was least intrusive and zero proof that this 80-foot is as well. Do you really have the proof that this is the best site and the best height? And by the way, the water tank, it's 26 feet. There's a little thing over to the side where people can climb up and there's a protective closure. And I'm kind of questioning the 60-foot thing too. I have to do a FOIA on that. But do you also have proof that there is no commercial industrial siting available versus residential? That's in your code too. Do you have proof that colocation really is happening here? They said they can't go lower than 80 feet. So how can two other carriers go lower than 80 feet if they can't? So I'm questioning the colocation unless, of course, they go up to the 100 feet. Now you've got issues with the airport and the lighting. Do you have proof that a lighting won't be, lighting won't be required on that? Because you're not going to get that unless that FAA report is done. So in the full memo, which we submitted, we, a whole bunch of us.
Please conclude your remarks. Ms. Miller, please conclude your remarks.
Okay. I'm going to say that there are many court case precedents and use them. They involve Sprint, Omni Point, T-Mobile, Consolidated, there's tons of them. And one of the things they said was adverse aesthetic impacts are proper legal grounds to deny. They also said substantial evidence includes what property owners say. And if they admit the photos of the closest homes, those presentations are defective and they should be disregarded. The applicant was asked for those photos and they said they didn't want to trespass on private property.
Please conclude your remarks. You're far beyond your.
Thank you. I will. The streets and sidewalks are not private. Anyways, in closing, thank you. It's not up to the public or the city to produce evidence. It's up to the applicant. You don't have that proof. You're not denying needed self-service. You're denying flawed and incomplete application. Thank you for allowing me to extend a bit. Thank you very much.
Dale Storrs.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Dale Storrs, 1494 Southview Drive. I'd like to start by saying I'm disappointed that the Planning and Zoning Committee did not take the community's concerns and research to heart regarding the proposed AT&amp;T cell tower. A misconception that was stated several times by P&amp;Z committee members was that this, that there is an existing cell tower on Indian Hill. As we now know, this is absolutely not the case. The existing monopole is not a cell tower, but per George Worley, City of Prescott, it's a City of Prescott Public Safety and Data Telecommunication Tower. There's no transponders, there's no antenna array, and we were told it was 60 feet tall. That's what we were told in past meetings. And if you look at it and you compare it to the water tank, it looks 60 feet tall. This is a significant point because a lot of the P&amp;Z committee members use this misconception as a basis for approval, and I think we just heard that. Residents from Southview, Pinion Oaks, Buena Vista Street, Longview Street, Commerce Drive, and the new Stringfield Development have voiced their opposition and relayed how it would change their view and the entire character of the surrounding area. This is extremely important as it's the foundation of being able to deny the permit request. Prescott Code says these towers should be harmonious with the character of the surrounding area. An 80-foot tower, or 100, though they say they won't go that high, whatever, an 80-foot tower with at least one full set of antenna arrays at the top will be seen for miles. It will change the entire look of the hill. In comparison, the city's data monopole is barely noticeable. Prescott Code states there'll be no significant negative impact upon residents of surrounding property. This cell tower will not only dominate in the view of multiple communities, but will devalue hundreds of homes, which will add up to untold millions of dollars. This not only affects the homeowners, but it will also affect property tax income to the county. This transference of wealth from us to AT&amp;T is unjust. I want to show you, there's 167 lots in Southview. I surveyed and found at least 60 homes will be able to see the tower. You can see it in yellow. That's 35% of the properties. As we've heard from real estate professionals and homeowners with past losses, 100% of Southview homeowners will be financially affected by this tower, not just the 35% that'll see the tower. The tower will change the dynamic of all the homes and communities that live off Pioneer Parkway. And these issues are exactly why the Prescott Land Development Code was created, to protect the community. We've done the research and we have also hired an attorney who specially, whose specialty is successfully helping cities justify the denial of cell tower permits. Please review the full memo previously submitted to see all the precedents set by court cases that our attorney has referenced. Use our research and resources to safely deny this permit. Finally, protect our community from turning Indian Hill with its historical relics to a cell tower compound. You have the power and justification to do just that. Thank you for listening to your community.
Larry Gray.
Mayor and City Council Members, my name is Larry Gray, 2979 South Park, Prescott. I said morning, supposed to say afternoon. Anyway, the applicant submitted their application to the State Land Department on 9/6/22. The applicant's answers to the questions listed below raise questions about the truthfulness of the application since the applicant was signed with the below acknowledgement. This is what they sign off at the State Land. I hereby certify under penalty of perjury, the information and statements contained herein, together with all exhibits and attachments, are true, correct, and complete, and that we have authority to e-sign this application document. I have bullet points here. Page two of the application, is the zoning of this parcel compatible with your use? Their answer was yes. Why are we here today if the applicant, application is compliant with their use? The reality is that the applicant is requesting a waiver. Number two, page three of the application, is there extraordinary issues affecting the subject parcel that you are aware of, such as the evidence of endangered species, cultural resources, topography, restraints, et cetera? Answer, unknown. I would ask the council to take what is sometimes referred to as judicial notice of what we call Indian Mountain and the ruins, a short distance from the proposed site of the tower. Does the applicant's response reflect reality? On page four of the application, what are the collocators by name, type, use, and FCC numbers? Answer, there are no collocators proposed for the tower apart from AT&amp;T's use of facilities. That one's a little difficult to identify as not truthful because we've heard different statements at the hearings. One time they said no, the next time they said yes, they're considering it. We don't know what they're going to do. This answer, okay. Please take that judicial notice available to the council and acknowledge there is a several-million-gallon City of Water, or City of Prescott water storage tank there because the application on page four says, are there any potable water drinking systems? They answered no. In my mind, a City of Water, a City Water Storage Tank, I think that's potable. I think that answer should have been yes. What else are they not telling us or are they disinformation us, if you will? The question the council must consider prior to approving the applicant's request is the veracity of the applicant's to the council. The applicant was willing to sign a State Land Department application with obvious errors under penalty of perjury. Where is the data showing gaps in coverage the FCC says is provided by the, can be provided by the applicant? There are state trust land about two miles north of Williamson Valley. They could have gathered information for that spot. Why didn't they check out the north side of Springfield area mountain that is a higher elevation to serve the? I oppose the waiver of any height restriction to the current code and ask the council to reject the application. May I provide this copy to the clerk?
This card's really hard to read, so I apologize if I mispronounced the name, but I believe it's Heidi Remacal?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Heidi Remacal and I work at 113 West Goodwin Street. I'm a residential real estate agent with Realty Executives, Arizona Territory. My husband and I are the Remacal Group and are partners. My husband is an associate broker and he's been in real estate almost 35 years. I've been in real estate over 11 years. Our team is always top-producing and wins many awards for our excellence. My clients are sellers and buyers of homes. And in my professional opinion, based on my extensive experience locally, property values will be significantly reduced. Therefore, I oppose this special permit application. After working with my clients, they have concerns about homes close to the cell towers. Their negative decision was most reflective of lower home values for resale in the future besides being aesthetically unappealing. Some of my buyers refused or refused to buy a home that was close to a cell tower or power lines. Period. Has the applicant really minimized the adverse impacts on the adjacent residential subdivisions as required in 2.4.49 of the zoning code? I don't think so. In fact, there are definitely proven effects of lower property values on homes near cell towers in up to 25% as HUD's classification as a nuisance or hazard exists. In addition to Assessor Judd Simmons' letters on property values, along with all the other testimonies from appraisers, studies, articles, and NAR research. You have all those documents. In some areas, the sellers have to disclose the towers when they list their property, even though it is a HUD requirement to disclose those hazards or nuisance all the time. I ask you, put yourself in the shoes of the homeowners closest to the cell tower placement, how would you feel about getting 20% to 25% less for your home when it sells after you've put many dollars in improvements, upgrades, or hard work? Even if it's only 5% or 10%, would you be okay with that? I'm speaking today on behalf of myself and my husband and partner, Rick Remacal. We come from decades of experience in real estate and we know what will happen to the property values. So can you show us the property values will not be reduced? Where's your evidence? In summary, Mayor Good and council members, you must consider the substantial evidence, which includes home value facts, professional opinions, property value data, testimonies of your constituents here, and lack of research on alternative sites to deny this application. You can easily apply the special use permit code to deny this. Thank you for your time.
John Moore.
Good afternoon. My name is John Moore. I live at 1397 Pinion Shadow Drive in Prescott. Putting cell towers near residential properties is just bad business. For residential owners, it means decreased property values. As for city governments, it results in decreased revenue in the form of property taxes. You may ask, how do we know property values will be reduced? There've been a number of studies conducted that show just that. The Appraisal Institute, the largest global professional member organization for appraisers, spotlighted the issue of cell towers and the fair market value of a home and educated its members that a cell tower should, in fact, cause a decrease in home value. An article titled "The Impact of Cellphone Towers on House Prices in Residential Neighborhoods" was published in the Appraisal Journal of the Appraisal Institute. The opinion study indicated that home buyers would pay from 10% to 19% to over 20% less for a property if it were in close proximity to a cellphone base station. The opinion survey results were then confirmed by a market sales analysis. Realtor Magazine wrote in an article titled "Cell Towers and Antenna Problematic for Buyers" that "An overwhelming 94% of home buyers and renters surveyed by the National Institute for Science, Law, and Public Policy say that they are less interested and would pay less for a property located near a cell tower or antenna. 79% said that under no circumstances would they ever purchase or rent a property within a few blocks of a cell tower or antenna. We believe a tower or facility such as the one proposed will diminish the buyer pool, significantly reduce home sales prices, and alter the character of the surrounding area and impair the use of the residential properties for their primary uses. Cell towers become eyesores, obstructing or tarnishing cherished views, whether it be from a property owner's kitchen window or a back patio, to the view from a hiking trail or park. Cell towers are not harmonious to the surrounding residential communities. I mean, we don't even have a confirmation that a blinking light is going to have to be put on top of this tower, so that's an unknown. During the City Council Study Session back on April 13, 2021, while discussing the changes in the city code for cell towers, it was specifically said that the cell communication providers have no right to decrease property values and should do no harm to the citizens of Prescott. In the case of the Williamson Valley cell tower, it brings great harm to the neighboring communities. Just a couple other quick points. The Planning Commission did not recommend an 80-foot tower. The applicant changed it from 100-foot to 80-foot, saying they heard the residents. And also, as we know, student trainees never fly outside the norm, so, you know, why should that be a concern? Anyway, we respectfully request that the City Council deny this application and protect the interests of the citizens of Prescott over the interest of AT&amp;T. Thank you.
Ann Moore.
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Moore. I live at 1397 Pinion Shadow Drive and yes, I am related to that other guy. I remember quite clearly why the two Planning and Zoning Commission members voted against this proposal. One voted against it because of the potential decline in property values. The other member voted against it, but he, because based on these maps, he wasn't sure that an 80-foot tower was even necessary. So that's why those were two negative votes. What I'd like to do is take you back to the City Council meeting that was held April 13, 2021, where the wireless code amendments were made to the city code. There was very strong emphasis to keep the residential height of cell towers at 35 feet. The preference is to put cell towers into commercial and industrial locations. In addition, it was said, "The SUP shall have technical information or other justification and address, including the effect on the environment." That is, it's called Indian Hill, but the official name is really Tewksbury. It has ancient Indian ruins on it. You can see the outline of the buildings up on that hill. That needs to be taken into consideration. In addition, they need to address compatibility with the surrounding area. This is a purely residential area. There is no industry, there's no commerce, there's no business around it. So why would you choose this site for a cell tower? It needs to also minimize the external impacts. You've heard about the property values, the desirability. I wouldn't want to live close to a tower. In that meeting, there were two significant themes. One was residential areas, and these are direct quotes from that meeting. Have true concern for the residential areas. Stick to the 55-foot height in residential communities. Having height limitations are a right and an expectation. Concern that residents are losing their protections. And cell towers need to be planned, not blindside people. And cell towers need to be planned, not blindside people. Well, guess what this cell tower has done to hundreds of local residents who didn't have a clue about this thing? The second significant theme of that meeting was local control. That's you folks up on this council. Local control. Don't give up local control. These are direct quotes again. Local control and considerations are legitimately considered when these permits are approved, and I will add, or denied. You are the people who decide whether or not this tower is built. You've heard this over and over and over from multiple people about the concerns that we have. Please do not let big business take over our wonderful town. I urge you to vote against this special use permit. Thank you.
Patna Corbin.
Good afternoon. My name is Patricia Corbin, and I live at 3054 South Park in Prescott. I'm going to be talking about the Nimby effect, not in my backyard. There is an issue with the proposed cell tower location. If so many residents like me are against the location, then there is a problem. The special use code, quote, says, "The city council may approve an application for a special use where it is reasonably determined that there will be no significant negative impact upon residents or surrounding properties or upon the public." In addition, the code says, "There shall not be any detrimental to the health, welfare, and safety of the surrounding neighborhood or its occupants, nor be substantially or permanently injurious to neighboring properties." The cell tower is proposed for an area that is densely populated, well-established for decades, Southview and the Longview Residence, along Residence and the Communities off North Williamson Valley Road and Pioneer Parkway. You will go against the code if you adversely affect so many homeowners. First, do no harm. The fact that so many homeowners and other residents have spoken up against it means that the proposed tower is not harmonious with its surroundings. Where can you show that this tower is harmonious? Real estate agents and our Yavapai County Assessor, Judd Simmons, stated that the property values will go down. We do not want our property values to drop due to the proposed cell tower location. You will go against the code regarding no significant negative impact if you approve this. No one wants something aesthetically unpleasing or that would affect the property values in their backyard. When you approve, what you approve must be harmonious. The solution is to put the 80-foot cell tower in a location somewhere else where there is less of a Nimby effect. Thank you.
James Newper? Hopefully.
Good to see you again, Council. I'm Jim Newper. I live at 1439 Evening Shade in Prescott. And this is my third chance to address most of you, first for a few. I'll point out three things. Some of them have already been mentioned, so I'll be really short on that. But the past members of this council, some years ago, don't remember the date, doesn't matter, made some rules and restrictions on buildings, towers, all of those kinds of things. And what irritates me a little bit about Prescott, and we've been here 18 years, no, 17 and a half years, developers, builders, whatever, they're constantly coming in for waivers to those wise people that made the rules. And once again, you all are faced with that problem of dealing with somebody that wants to make more money and get waivers. Not a good idea. Most of the time, it hasn't been mentioned. I'm his Arizona Site Steward. That means I inspect some of the Native American Indian ruins around here. One of them is Tewksbury, which everybody keeps calling an Indian Hills. And I've seen nothing in any of these meetings that says anybody, planning, zoning, whomever, has talked to any of the tribes around here responsible for that and what it does to them. So I think that should happen. The bottom line is, lots of people can bring in this up. Where's the real data? Show me the data. Not the money, show me the data. Okay, thanks.
Kenneth James Gelner.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Kenneth Gelner, 110 North Summit Ave, Prescott. I just want to talk about something that's been mentioned here a couple times, but I want to get into the detail a little bit. The FCC has recognized the absolute need for hard data rather than the commonly submitted propagation maps, which can be easily manipulated to create overexaggeration in need and significant gaps. The FCC sought, quote, "Mobile providers to submit a statistically valid sample of on-the-ground data, i.e. both mobile and stationary drive test data, as an additional method to verify mobile providers' coverage maps," end quote. The FCC defines drive tests as, quote, "Tests analyzing network coverage for mobile services in a given area, i.e. measurements taken from vehicles traveling on roads in the area," end quote. On August 18, 2020, the FCC issued a final rule in which the FCC found that requiring providers to submit detailed data about their propagation models will help the FCC verify the accuracy of the models. Specifically, it requires, quote, "That the coverage model has been validated and calibrated at least one time using on-the-ground testing and our real-world measurements completed by the providers or its vendor," end quote. The mandate requiring more accurate coverage maps has been set forth by Congress. The Broadband Deployment Accuracy and Technological Availability Act requires the FCC to collect more detailed information on where coverage is provided and to, quote, "Establish a process to verify the accuracy of such data," end quote. If Congress and the FCC requires further validation and more accurate coverage models, there is no reason the city of Prescott should not do the same. Prescott City Council, I ask you, do you have the proof and documented hard data as required by the FCC final rule? The use of propagation maps with no way to validate its claim of a significant gap in coverage and without any confirmed calibration of the models violates the FCC final rule. If you have to follow the FCC guidelines, then follow all of them. Vote to deny this application in compliance with the law and the FCC final rule. Thank you.
Cecilia Denise Allen.
Good afternoon. My name is Cecilia Denise Allen. I live at 601 Thunderbird Drive in Prescott. And unlike all the others, I have nothing prepared, so I'm going to speak very briefly. I would just like you to visualize our beautiful city and the surroundings five years from now. And visualize the city with unchecked and unstoppable cell tower placement. What do you think it'll look like? I think most people here really pride themselves on preserving the heritage that we have here, the beautiful rock formations, the mountains, the beautiful structures in the downtown area. And already, that is being marred just by looking around. And picture that five years from now. I mean, we need to band together, and we can't stop it, but we can at least put some of it in check. And I think long ago, someone supposedly named David fought a giant. And we're fighting a giant. You know, this is a giant. This is a difficult task because all the laws and the codes have been put in their favor. But it doesn't mean we shouldn't stop fighting it. And I would just recommend an attorney called David Campanelli, who does this for a living. He used to work for the Giant, and now he works for the Davids. So just, you might want to consider that. Thank you.
Phil Davis.
Good afternoon. My name is Phil Davis, 2647 Country Park Drive. And hello to Mayor Good and City Council. First, I want to address something brought up from Councilman Montoya regarding first responders. AT&amp;T has a feature called FirstNet. There was a discussion by a gentleman regarding the disaster in Lahaina. Yavapai County Sheriff's Office, the executive comms director, Samantha Russell, I spoke to her. YCSO has opted out, along with the other agencies in this city, for FirstNet. So I'm a volunteer with YCSO. We use police band radios. We also use Verizon, and our lives depend on them for sure. So, you know, the city leadership encourages the public to participate in governance. So, you know, we're here because we love Prescott, just like you do, and we want intelligent, thoughtful growth. I oppose a special use permit. So do the people behind me. And the Prescott residents have been, you know, unambiguous about what they want. AT&amp;T can't push us around. In fact, two of the Planning and Zoning Commissioners we talked about earlier, they chose to stand against this 10-story black eye. I'm asking each of you to join us. Don't rubber stamp this hideous Orwellian tower. Our team has put together a comprehensive database to deny the permit specific to the FCC-required denial criteria, including the Land Development Code and the Telecommunications Act of 1996 that was discussed earlier. The packet also included case law. So unlike a road or a bridge or utility easement, we have a choice where to construct this 10-story permanent tower structure. You get to pick the location, not SmartLink. We all use cell phones, but this out-of-town AT&amp;T middleman has mistakenly scouted a scenic Pioneer Parkway overlook. Fun fact, you can see the Outer Loop Antenna Tower north of us in Williamson Valley from ground level at the base of the city water tank. Why is this important, you ask? Well, because the AT&amp;T scout and also city planning, they say, well, AT&amp;T towers have to see the other tower. So if you stand at the base of the water tower, and this is your antenna, that's all the antenna you need to see that Outer Loop Tower. You need about an inch and a half antenna. You don't need an 80- to 100-foot tower. That's my proposal. Also, can I make an observation? Some of you have seen the Planning and Zoning recordings. I've been to all three. You've seen they've been contested completely unanimously. Doesn't the burden of need fall on the applicant? Why is city staff, why is city planning advocating for making calls, researching, and supplying data on behalf of SmartLink? City planning, they're calling city police, fire, YCSO, the airport, to name a few. The SmartLink presentation by city planning was really compelling. I almost switched sides. I'm pro-business. Come on. It strikes me that I'm not up against SmartLink, but I'm also up against city planning. You guys have seen for yourself. Do you think it was a one-sided presentation? It looks like bias. In politics, we call it election interference.
Mr. Davis, please conclude your remarks.
Very good. In conclusion, Williamson Valley definitely needs cell service. That's a fact. If you deny the special use permit, SmartLink will survey a more suitable location to the north, Deepwell Ranch, State Land, Bowel Stretch, all the way up to Outer Loop Road. There's plenty of open space. There's no property value impact to existing homeowners. The users there need better coverage. And in business, we call it point of service. That, my friends, we call a win-win situation. So, Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. Please join us in this crusade to keep Prescott beautiful and put your city attorney to task, and let's stand up to the bully in the room.
That's all.
Councilmember Rusi, has a last-minute comment?
Mayor, I move to deny SUP 23-002. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 5-2.
Yeah, it was a deny motion.
I think we just have a correction from Mayor Protem Cantalma. If you want to state your change of vote for the record.
How do I do that legally? I mean, I made a mistake on that. Yes, because it was a deny, so I meant the other way. Thank you.
Okay, so it passes 6-1.
Correct. Thank you all for coming, and you don't have to worry about a cell tower over there in Southview. All right. We'll move on to item 10C.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2023-1852. An ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the purchase of approximately 76.3 acres of real property from CDC Prescott LLC and Chamberlain Development LLC near Prescott Regional Airport, Ernest A. Lovefield.
Thank you, Mayor. Should I go forward?
Please proceed, City Attorney.
Thank you. You have before you today a possible purchase agreement of about 76.3 acres of land north of the airport at a cost of $8 million. And I will say, for the purpose of attribution, I did not create this slideshow, but you've seen it before. I'll go through it quickly. And please, if you have any questions, let me know.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we talked previously, there's several planning documents that overlap over the airport area. The Prescott General Plan of 2015, the Airport-Specific Area Plan, and City Council Strategic Plan. There's also relevant to this area, the Deepwell Ranch Master Plan, which in 2017 became the proper zoning in that area. Now, we're talking specifically about areas, about the pinkish area there, which is off of the Crosswind Runway. It falls within Impact Zones 2 and 3, which we'll talk about a little bit in a second. So there are several types of airport protections that we look at. The first is airport impact zones, sometimes called crash zones. These are areas off the or near an airport that are more likely to have airport crashes. As you can see, Impact Zone 1 is directly off the end of each runway. Impact Zone 2 extends off of that Impact Zone 1. Impact Zone 3 is kind of in a conical shape off of Impact Zone 1. Impact Zone 4 extends beyond that, and Impact Zone 5 is essentially adjacent to the runway. And Impact Zone 6 is a large circle around the area. And Impact Zone 6 is a large circle around the area of the airport. Airport impact zones are the primary way that we have, in the past, dealt with airport protections to ensure that crashes happening around the airport didn't hit people, places, and so forth. Now, another airport protection are noise contours, which is trying to seek appropriate, compatible uses surrounding the airport. And finally, we have the OEI departure display, which is relevant to commercial air service, and in this case, not relevant to what we'll be talking about to this property. So as you can see, the property in question falls entirely in Zones 2 and 3 of the airport impact zones. Those are considered moderately high impact zones. There's the 76.3 acres that we referred to. And as has previously been mentioned, this area is entitled to residential use. Now, when we did the Deepwell Ranch Master Plan and the Development Agreement 2017, there were some protections for airport, restricting residential and school uses near the airport in most of these impact zones. This area here in Impact Zones 2 and 3 was not protected under that airport noise overlay within the Deepwell Ranch Master Plan, primarily because our planning documents at the time were colored through a study that we received that turned out to be inaccurate. So based on the inaccurate maps we had received years prior, we talked to the developer in the Development Agreement, and we did not protect this area specifically. As you can see, noise compatibility, 65 DNL is considered by the FAA to be a threshold of significance and important to protect. Currently, it just barely touches the area that you're looking at. As it expands, it will move further into that area. And as I mentioned, the OEI display is not relevant to this. It is only relevant to commercial air service and not relevant to the parcel you're looking at today. This shows the proposed AVO. That is not before council, but was addressed by planning and zoning. And you can see where it falls in. That area falls within the Deepwell Ranch Master Plan, which was recommended by planning and zoning to be exempt from the AVO, but, as I mentioned, yet to be determined by council. So the question becomes, why are we looking at purchasing this property? And ultimately, that's a council decision, but the reason is because the property lays entirely within airport impact zones 2 and 3. Besides Impact Zone 1, obviously, the most heavily trafficked and potential for accidents around the airport. It's partially in the 65 DNL and can be more in the future, and it's not protected by the Deepwell Ranch Airport Noise Overlay, as I mentioned before. The Development Agreement grants vested rights to residential and other uses in this area and in this parcel, and it cannot be removed once vested through zoning or other restrictions. So the city, at this point, is making a decision whether to allow development according to the Development Agreement, or to purchase the land either through agreement, disagreement, or through condemnation. Sorry. So you have before you today a purchase-and-sell agreement and a settlement agreement to decide upon. Under the purchase-and-sell agreement, the city will purchase four parcels equalling roughly 76.2 acres within Impact Zones 2 and 3 for $8 million. There's a liquidated damage provision that if the city terminates or cancels the agreement after signing, then we pay 20%. The city will pay 20% for pulling out of that agreement. And a closing date of March 9th. The settlement agreement also that you have establishes certain requirements. One is that we agree to the purchase-and-sell agreement. That's why you will get the purchase-and-sell agreement first to vote on before you vote on the settlement agreement. And a few of the other provisions are up there, that no residential will be allowed even after the city buys it for as long as the airport remains in operation, and any property annexed into Deepwell Ranch and/or additional properties will not be subject to enforcement of a future AVO. The city will grant utility ingress/egress for hospital property to the north and Deepwell Ranch to the east. There's an agreement that the city will continue to work on obtaining right-of-way easement for Jenna Lane over state land, which is a requirement we have, and that the arbitration and all possible claims related to our previous disputes will be released. So at this point, council is considering the purchase-and-sell agreement and the settlement agreement. It helps mitigate residential encroachment, preserves important community asset in the airport. There is a potential to receive reimbursement through the FAA. That process has been started. We won't know. It always remains subject to FAA discretion. We have our airport experts that can speak to that. But there is a potential for reimbursement through federal and state funds. So previously, the recommendation-
Councilmember Rusing, you had a question here.
Please let the attorney continue. Thank you.
Okay. The staff recommendation from the city was to approve the purchase of the 76.3 acres for airport protection, but council will be making that vote on the purchase-and-sell agreement and on the settlement agreement. So I can answer any questions or discuss as needed.
Thank you. I would just like to remind the public that the purchase-and-sale agreement and the settlement agreement are two separate documents. And two weeks ago at our last council meeting, these documents were placed on my desk. The final draft was placed on my desk, and I was expected to vote on it within a few minutes. I did not have a chance to read it, and fortunately, the majority of council agreed with me. So here we are again, and thanks to the diligent efforts of our city attorney and the owners of our property, we have come together and have a much better agreement now than was originally proposed. But I have a question for the attorney, since we have two separate agreements, and we agreed that the settlement agreement should not be approved, that there's issues with it, there's parts that have already been taken care of. If we approve the ordinance, can I just say excluding... Should I just say, just including the purchase-and-sale only?
Yes, so the first is the ordinance, and the ordinance is, because by charter, we have to purchase property through an ordinance, the first motion would be related to the ordinance, and that's only the purchase-and-sale. After that, there will be a motion, one way, to deny or to approve the settlement agreement. So there'll be two separate votes. But the first motion would be either approve or deny the ordinance and purchase.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a question for the city attorney. Joe, when we met on December 19th and this item was on the agenda, is this purchase-and-sale agreement substantially the same as what we were looking at on the 19th? Are there any changes to the proposal, the sale, purchase-and-sale agreement today from December 19th?
There have been some small changes, including, as of yesterday, Chamberlain, who owns this property, was working with us and made a couple of changes yesterday. So we have made some changes. I would say substantially, it's the same document as previous.
Can you say what the changes were that were made yesterday?
Oh, yes, sorry. Of course. The Chamberlain Group agreed to extend the time for a due diligence period, or the time between signing of this document and closing, to March 9th. So that was an appreciated extension. They agreed on a reduction of the liquidated damage provision from $2 million to 1.6%, which is the 20%. And I think that's primarily, that's about the main changes that they've done.
Thank you.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to make some comments. Today, we are voting on a crucial decision, the approval of land purchase around the North Crosswind Runway at Prescott Regional Airport. For me, it's essential to consider the facts and figures before making a decision of this magnitude. I think that's true of all of us. The first thing I take into consideration is the usage of the North Crosswind Runway. There's some dispute, but I've heard it's used less than 10% for takeoffs and landings at the airport. To put this in perspective, I've looked at and analyzed data from the National Transportation Safety Board, NTSB, dating back to 1982. Out of all the crashes since then, a mere 0.06% have occurred off the North Runway. In simpler terms, if there were 100 crashes, only six of them would have happened off the North Runway. And historically, none of the crashes that have happened off the North Crosswind Runway have resulted in injuries or fatalities. Now, for me, the other part to consider today is the financial aspect. To proceed with this land acquisition, our city will have to go into debt. Regardless of any potential funding from grant reimbursement from FAA or Arizona Department of Transportation ADOT, the debt service would amount to a hefty $1.5 million a year from our general fund for the next 20 years, assuming a 5% interest rate. This means we face two options: either cut city services by $1.5 million annually for the next two decades, affecting our central departments like police and fire, or consider raising taxes. I, for one, firmly stand against raising taxes for anything other than police, fire, water, roads, and trash. With water and trash running off enterprise funds, as we heard earlier today, and street services having a dedicated portion of our sales tax revenue, an increase in sales tax would likely directly and negatively impact future funding to police and fire, which is a nonstarter for me. The last resort would be a general obligation bond, an additional levy on property taxes for every resident of the city of Prescott. Such a levy would require voter approval, which hasn't been initiated yet despite two years of discussion around airport land acquisition. Voting on a land purchase without budgeted funds or cash on hand is financially irresponsible. For me, it would be akin to buying a $60,000 car without the means to make the payment. Not a good financial decision. Lastly, the highest priority for our airport, in my view, should be the runway extension. It's vital for the airport's future economic impact to our city, will further aid in wildland fire suppression efforts, and potentially help mitigate noise complaints. Importantly, my discussions with the previous airport director, our current interim director of the airport, as well as Dibble, suggest that this land acquisition will have no direct impact or benefit for the runway extension. In fact, it might even cause us to have to delay that. Considering the severe financial concerns and potential jeopardy this purchase puts into the runway extension plan, I cannot support this purchase, and I will be voting no.
Councilman Gambogi.
A question for Joe. Those two changes to the purchase agreement, were they for or against our favor?
Those were favorable changes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. To put this amount of money, this $8 million, in perspective, that's about how much we spent to buy this city hall, our new city hall. And I don't think we're on the verge of bankruptcy. Because it was an internal loan, we carried it, and we're actually paying it off. We almost have the building paid off now. So I think I'd like to ask Mr. Woodfield, our finance director, to come out up here and explain to us that if we make this purchase, all is not lost. Thank you.
All's broad term. The city will continue on. The, I guess, you know, the point is, if, you know, the numbers we talked about, the $1.5 million are for all the properties around the airport that the city is looking at. Yes, that is going to have an impact on the general fund, for sure. It will affect funding for public safety. Public safety is a major component of the general fund. I guess, Councilwoman, I'm really not sure what your question was. I mean, it is going to impact the general fund. Is it the end of something? I don't think so, but it is going to affect the funding for public safety at some level.
Well, I would just like to make the point that the reason why we increased the close of escrow is so we could do our due diligence and meet FAA requirements to inspect the property and make sure they're, and do soil sampling to make sure that there's no contamination, because the FAA will not reimburse us if there's contamination. So now we have enough time to start doing the due diligence to meet FAA requirements so we can be reimbursed, not for all the purchase price, but within the next several years of approximately, what, 90% of the purchase price?
No, they will not reimburse more than the appraised amount, I'm relatively sure. And the appraised amount for this property was...
6.7?
Six...
6.8.
Somewhere around there. So you have that $1.3 million. You have the 2.5% to 5% of the full amount, because FAA only reimburses 95%. State usually does 2.5. I'm looking to the airport to make sure I still have heads nodding. And sometimes, the state won't do the 2.5 if they're giving other funding, which you can see in the examples that we used on the 24th. In the years, they're giving us $3 million, they're not going to help us with the other part of it. So we will get some funding. The $1.5 million impacted the general fund is for all the properties that the council is looking at that have not all settled at this point, and none of these things do take into account also the additional cost related to the extension of the runway. There is a significant share that will need to come from the city for that as well. I'm not sure I'm answering your question, because I'm not sure I...
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Mayor, I think Ted was ahead of me. Were you? Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Ted.
Are we going to ask for public comment?
Yes, I'll ask for it.
Okay, so I'll reserve my comment till after the public comment.
Well, I'll make my comment now, then, if you're okay. You know, I've been speaking about this in different venues. I've been asked to talk about it. I just recently did a podcast, and I, like Mr. Montoya, have a concern about the financial aspect of this, too. But I, all of that goes away when I think about the potential loss of life. People have said to me, "Well, we have had relatively small amount of crashes out in that area." I think Mr. Montoya quoted six out of the NTSB. I got something more than that. But, you know, I want to remind everybody-
It was six off the North Runway.
Okay. The Crosswind Runway is there for a reason. It's because of exactly what it says. When the winds are, yeah, the Crosswinds Runway, when the winds in this area are adverse to takeoff, they have to use that runway to be able to leave here. But, you know, on the NTSB website, you can go on, I've got it right here if anybody wants to look at it, I have a complete report from 1964 of 168 crashes since 1964. Here it is. Do we roll the dice and just hope and pray that we don't have a catastrophic event when we allow building at the end of that runway? We have now a situation where we have a thing called a zero lot line. It normally was 3 in 10. Some of the builders have asked for a 5-feet setback on both sides. This is high-density, single-family homes in there, whether they're ownership or rentals, it doesn't matter. So if I take into effect that I may have a situation at some point where we've got a firefighting tanker that needs to go off that way during the monsoons, whatever it might be, full of jet fuel, we all of a sudden have a situation where this thing could potentially crash into a development of 280 homes, 5 feet apart. You can kind of figure that out, what the loss of life could potentially be. Then, then you take into effect this thing called a class-action lawsuit. You think, in this litigious world today, that these people are going to get, or dodge the potential of a lawsuit when they were allowed to build homes at the end of a runway, that we have a known component of accidents that have happened there. I'm not willing to roll the dice for that. Now, yes, we do have an $8 million ask. We'll have to pay for that. Our city's going to have to bridge that loan, and potentially, we're going to get a repayment back from the FAA with 6.7, which is the appraised price of that. We will have to be out of pocket for the balance of that at some point. I'm just not willing to take the chance. I can have a vision. I know it's going to potentially be there at some point, or could be, and I just don't think it's right. So I'm going to absolutely vote yes on the purchase. We'll have to bridge the loan. I'm going to vote no on the settlement statement. I don't think that's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and there are many of your comments that I agree with. The reason why there's very- The reason why there's very few recorded accidents on the crosswind runway is because it's rarely used. But it is used when we have serious crosswinds. If we don't protect that crosswind runway, then we do have crosswinds, that runway's going to be closed. And guess what? If we're fighting a wildfire, whether it's the Crooks Fire, or the Indian Fire, or any of these other fires, God help us if we have to have another Yarnell. But we need to have those slurry bombers able to take off and provide that slurry fire retardant when those winds and those fires are happening. And if we don't protect that crosswind runway to use it when it's needed, then we put ourselves and our residents at serious risk. So granted, this is an expensive acquisition. Fortunately, we've been able to reduce the requested compensation significantly, and we've been able to reduce some of the terms of this purchase. We still have a very high likelihood that most of this is going to be subject to FAA reimbursement, and the net cost will have to be paid for over time. But we do have other properties out there near the airport that we still own that are going to be sold. And just like the city hall where we've been able to sell properties and take those proceeds to pay down the cost of this building acquisition. So we'll apply a lot of those steps as well, but we will end up with some manageable payment over the next, potentially, 20 years. And even with a typical bond that might be callable within 10 years, we might be able to reduce the overall cost. So all things considered, being able to protect that area and make sure that we don't have those types of crash risks. I've mentioned before that I've had friends and neighbors who've died in aircraft crashes, and all of them never expected that that would happen. And those were at major airports. One was caused by wind shear. It was an L-1011 flying out of DFW that had this strange wind shear event happen, and that crashed. And then, of course, I was living in Sacramento when that F-86 Korean fighter jet flamed out and crossed a major arterial and crashed into a Farrell's ice cream parlor, killing over 30 children and their parents. Unfortunately, these things do happen. They happen occasionally, fortunately occasionally. Just in the last two years, we've had fully-fueled general aviation planes crash coming off the end of the regular runway. Fortunately, they didn't cause any damages, they didn't catch on fire, and the occupants walked away. So the point is, these things do happen. And I agree with Mayor Protem, we're going to do our darndest to protect the residents in the areas around the airport to make sure it doesn't happen here. So I will vote to support this purchase. Councilman Montoya, you're back up there.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just had a question for maybe our interim airport director, or Charlie from DIBL. Is the North Crosswind Runway rated for slurry bombers to take off from it? Can you speak to that?
Good evening. I don't believe the slurry bombers would use that unless there was an emergency situation. I haven't had any knowledge that they've used it for takeoff. Perhaps if there's a situation on landing when they're lighter, but I'm not...
Yeah, and that's, my understanding is similar to yours, because my thinking is that, what I know about that runway is that it's not, it's not, one, it's not long enough for a safe takeoff.
Right.
And it's certainly not of the same thickness that you would have on the main runway. And if you have a fully-loaded air tanker, it's not, it seems like you would probably end up damaging that runway, would be my understanding from folks I've talked to.
Yeah, I would say, in the case of a severe crosswind, if they were landing, I could see that they could potentially use the crosswind, but I don't think for takeoff it wouldn't be enough...
Thank you.
...to get off.
Yeah, Charlie, it would be a function of power and weight.
Right, right. Yep.
So even though they may not be able to take off fully-loaded, might even only have a quarter of a load.
Correct.
But if they could potentially participate in retarding, or possibly putting out a wildfire that's in close proximity, I think we'd probably expect them to use that.
Right, right. So it would be all a function of the weight of the aircraft at that particular time. So, yep.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I just would like to let the public know that this property is part of the Deepwell Ranch master plan, and it was annexed in November of 2017, just prior to Mayor Good's election to council. And with that annexation, all of the zoning that was already in place that protected the airport runways was voided, 6-1, by a 6-1 vote. Gene Wilcox was the only council member who had the sense to vote against it. All the proper zoning while it was in the county was voided. You can look it up online and see the maps, and was replaced with one zoning category, SPC, specially planned community, which is a basket of letting the developer put anything anywhere he wants. And so, as it is, the developer can build homes, churches, schools, daycares at the end of that runway. It's non-conforming, it's dangerous, it's non-compatible, and under the 10th Amendment of the Constitution, as elected officials, we are entrusted with public health, safety, and welfare, and that's why I'm voting for this deal. Thank you.
I guess we can probably take public comment now.
Mayor Good, Mayor Protem can tell me in council. I'm back again. So far, I'm 0 for 1 today. Let's see if I can do a little bit better this time. And in reference to what Mayor Phil Good said about that accident at DFW Airport, I'd like to let him know that we've learned from history from that, and I hope this council learns from past council history, and I'll touch on that in a moment. But I've flown that wind shear scenario many times in the simulator at Southwest Airlines, and it's, we get that training over and over and over and over again. And wind shear detection, wind shear prevention, or not avoidance, rather, you can't prevent it, but you can avoid it, and also wind shear recovery is something that we train on all the time. As far as the history, learning from history, the Prescott Airport was dedicated August 26, 1928. That makes the airport 95 and 1/2 years old. And in the early days of the Prescott Airport, it was the Wild, Wild West of aviation, barnstorming and stunts, and anything goes at the Prescott Airport. And then in 1941, when the war started, the FAA came to Prescott and said, you know, you have this nice airport that's located inland away from the coast, we don't want the student pilots flying up and down the coast, because they're likely to get shot down when they wander into the wrong airspace. So we'd like to do training for pilots here in Prescott. And Prescott thought that was a great idea, and the FAA says, we'll pump a lot of money into this airport if you agree to protect and preserve this airport for the purposes of aviation forever. Prescott says, sure, we'll do that. And so Prescott and the FAA had this agreement. FAA put a lot of money into the airport, a lot of training was done at the airport. And then, in the 1950s, the city at that time had the attitude that, well, you know, we need some money. So they started selling some land around the airport specifically to the Antelope Hills Development Corporation for the housing development. The FAA finally figured out what was going on, and they were not happy about it. And then in 1964, they cut off the Prescott Airport from all federal funding. No grants, no nothing. Prescott was on its own with its airport. And then after 10 years of receiving no federal money for that airport, in 1974, Prescott and the FAA got together, and the city of Prescott rededicated themselves to protecting and preserving the airport for aviation. And that also started the Airport Advisory Committee. That was part of the, that's how that came about. And so, what we're looking at, and I, you know, I understand the fiduciary responsibility that you all have and concerns about how much this is going to cost, but we're not talking about just the money that we're spending today, for today. It's for the future as well, the next 95 years and beyond. Just four years from this August, we will be celebrating the 100th anniversary of this airport. So also, as a member of the General Plan Committee and the new chairman of the General Plan Committee, I've learned some things about the attitude of the Prescott public about this airport. We've had jet service to Denver and Los Angeles for, since about 2017, is I think when we started getting that service. The people of Prescott have had a taste of real jet service, and they like it, and they want some more. During the open house in August, we had 200 people from the public come and express their opinions about the airport, among other things. And I was at the table that had the airport, and I was shocked, totally shocked, at the overwhelming public support for this airport. People love it. They love the jet service, they love what is being done to protect the airport. We had four red dot, I'm sorry, not four, three red dots from people that had negative comments about the airport. And so I always talked with the people when they were coming to the table and to get their comments and feedback. The three negative red dots were not that they didn't like the airport, it's that they wanted more. They want more jet service, more destinations, and more flights, more frequency. So even the three negative red dots were really people are saying, yeah, you guys are on the right track, but we want more. So as far as it comes to spending this money, I think that the citizens of Prescott will support this money, because they like what you're doing, they want more, and it's not just for us today, it's for the future of Prescott long before we are all ashes in the ground. So we're talking about today and the future in supporting not only this purchase of land to protect and preserve the airport, but any other purchases you may have to make in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I just want to make two brief comments. A lot has been made of public safety, and I totally agree with that. And we all are concerned about police and fire and funding them adequately, but this is also, as has been said, a major public safety issue. So I don't think we can offset them. I think we have to take care of both of them. The other thing is, there were some comments that this is not used very often, but if you look at all of the airports, thousands of airports in the United States, the crosswind runway would rank in the top 300 busiest. So it is not a minor runway that's seldom used. It is used, and every takeoff and landing poses a risk. So I just wanted to clarify that as well. Thank you.
Been here far too many times. Darrell Ostermiller, 13850 North Spanish Bard Lane, Prescott, Arizona 86305. I'd like to address a couple points. First of all, Councilman Montoya speaks as if he knows all the facts, and his facts are wrong. The crosswind runway is used more than 10%. I don't have the exact figure with me here today, but I believe it was right around 20% or more. The factual information on the crosswind runway is it's the biggest, probably, safety factor of our airport, especially for small airplanes, which are the majority of our traffic. And he talks about the Forest Service, firebombers not using the crosswind runway. Well, that is true, but all the support aircraft that are used to support the firebombers can use that runway. King Airs, they have a lot smaller aircraft that have to support the firebomber, so it is a true factor in firefighting. All of our smaller aircraft depend on that runway extremely, myself included. And to minimize the impact of the crossing runway is totally wrong. It is one of the biggest safety features of that airport. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Well, very good. I think we've heard from the public. I think we've looked at the proposal there pretty extensively, and we've looked at the financial impacts as well. So with that said, I'll enter, Ted, I think you still have a comment, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't get a chance to make my comments about the cell phone tower, so I didn't want to be ambushed this time. I wanted to get out early. I think it's important, in terms of problem solving, to understand where we are. This is not a new issue. This is not like buying a new car, where the paint's perfect, the upholstery's perfect, the engine's perfect, the tires are perfect. This is an airport that's been around close to 100 years. In the 2015 general plan, they protected the airport. And to Kathy Rusing's point, in 2017, that deal got squirreled. And what we're doing is we're fixing a problem that was created before. To Teri Sapio's point, I was there at the general plan open house. He's right. The station he manned on the airport had a ton of green dots, and the three dots meant Dallas, Las Vegas, and the Bay Area. So we have people that have bought tickets from as far away as Anthem to fly out of Prescott. And when I was campaigning, I would ask people, do we really need commercial service? And I never found anyone that said no. So I think the reality is, we got to fix what we broke years ago. It's going to cost some money, but it's a good investment for the residents and for all of Yavapai County. Thank you.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I too agree that we are correcting past mistakes, and thank goodness we know of this mistake. I couldn't be someone who's 10, 15, 20 years down the line, hopefully still living in this community, absolutely not on council, and probably in La Fuente, but who has to face a family, or the parents of a student pilot, or the family of the people who were in those high-density homes, who when a jet hit, hurt multiple homes at the same time. I will not say I should have spent $8 million, and now we're facing a class-action lawsuit in this city of millions and millions and millions of dollars, much more than this correction is going to cost. And so for that reason, how everyone likes to Monday morning quarterback previous councils, I don't want to be the council that could have and should have fixed this mistake. So I will be voting yes.
Councilman Gambogi, some final comments.
There's one more thing I forgot to mention, and I think this is important in terms of perspective. I think everyone on this council agrees we need more fire stations. You hear me, Holger? Good, okay.
me, Holger? Good, okay. Now, why do we need a fire station? Well, because the city's growing and emergency times are increasing. I think we're at 11 minutes and 30 seconds, and you want to get it down to five incrementally, year by year. If a house catches fire during the day, you dial 911, you lost a house. If at night, a house catches fire, maybe they don't get out in time, and that's a tragedy. Maybe we lose two or three people. But if we build houses on the extensions of these runways and airplanes crash into those houses, we're not talking about one or two people. If it's a commercial flight, we're talking about 50-plus people. If it's a training flight, it's the pilot, the instructor, and the number of people in the house that it hit. I think we have to err on the building for the future of this airport because the residents endorse it. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, you know, you said something earlier, Councilman Gambogi, about economic -- at the economics of the airport. And I did want to just remind everybody that the combination between the airport and Embry-Riddle for our region is a $500 million economic driver. You can't just ignore that. It's $500 million, and growing, by the way. And we don't have a crystal ball. You know, people have said to me, well, you know, nobody's died. Well, yeah, actually, people have died. But the other reason that we've had a small loss of human life out there is because we had open space. We had ranchland. They hit the ground in the ranchland. They didn't hit a subdivision. So if an airplane has -- I don't know how many gallons a small plane of gasoline has. If it hits a house that has a gas meter in it, you're going to have an explosion. Common sense tells me we cannot create that scenario. And I basically just want to talk about the economic driver as well. Thank you.
Councilman Montoya?
Thank you, mayor. I just want to say, I appreciate where everyone else is at on this. And I realize very clearly that I'm the minority here, and that's fine. I just, with all due respect to Ted, I think the notion that fire departments these days are only responding to fires is an oversimplification of what our fire department does. And what we're really talking about is potential loss of life when it relates to the ability to provide -- respond to a medical event, like a heart attack. And increasing our debt service, which will without a doubt have an impact on our general fund, which will without a doubt have an impact on our ability to further police and fire service, will reduce response times. Instead of moving in incremental directions to better times, we'll incrementally be moving into a direction of, you know, not as good times. And I too wonder about facing people in 15, 20 years, and I will still be here, probably not on council, probably not in Los Fuentes either, hopefully. And when I face those people, I want to be able to look them in the eye and not be able to have them say, you know, my grandfather died because no one got to him in time. Or my son, you know, didn't -- had an anaphylactic shock and didn't get treated in time and had a very negative outcome. Those are public safety concerns we have to manage, too. And so I really, really worry about this. And again, I'm still going to vote no on this, but I guess the thing that I would challenge all of the rest of you is that to think long and hard about what this means. And what it means is an increase in tax services -- in taxes to service this debt. Because we cannot have it both ways. We cannot spend this money and not raise taxes. And so I think if you're going to vote for this, you've got to be ready to go out and convince voters that this is so important that they're willing to increase their sales tax, they're willing to increase their property tax. Because otherwise, you're going to go to those same residents and say, sorry that your response time is now 15 minutes. So, thank you.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, mayor. Just a real quick comment. I know this has been a lot of discussion. And I think as a mayor and council, where we'll be entering into the strategic planning process here at the end of the month and first of next month, that we need to find solutions to improve public safety and purchase this land. I am in favor of purchasing this land. I think it's the right thing to do, but not at the expense of public safety for police and fire. And so I think we need to take a real hard look, as a mayor and council, and say, how can we do both? Because we're going to need to do both.
Councilmember Rusing?
Well, I'm glad we finally have a council that's addressing public safety, because we haven't had a new fire station or even remodeled fire stations in the last 30 years. So I would like to ask the public to talk to former council members and ask them why they didn't build a fire station every 10 years like they should have to keep up with our growth. And instead, they ignored the problem, and this is why we're here having this discussion today. And I just want to tell the public that this is the buck stops here, council, and we're going to deal with these problems. Thank you.
All right. I will entertain a motion at this point, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Can I have my slide back? Because it doesn't read the same.
John, can you put the slide back up? That had the council recommendations on it from the presentation. Thank you.
I move to approve ordinance 2023-1852, the purchase and sale agreement for approximately 76.3 acres from Chamberlain Development LLC.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 6-1.
Very good. Now, we have to take a vote on the settlement agreement proposal.
So let me just clarify. If we vote no, that means that we're not going to accept the settlement agreement. Deny it. So if we vote no, that means we're denying it.
If you're -- sorry. If your motion is to deny the settlement agreement, then you'd vote yes on that motion.
Okay.
If your motion is to approve it and you vote yes, that means you want to approve it.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to deny the settlement agreement. I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilman Moore? That's okay. Thank you. Passes 7-0.
Now, we're moving on to item 10D.
Approval of city contract number 2024-157 with Asphalt Paving and Supply Inc. for the Prescott Lakes Parkway and Sun Dog Ranch Road intersection improvements.
I guess good evening, mayor and council. Tim Sherwood, Public Works. The project I have for you today is a -- includes the intersection of Prescott Lakes Parkway, Sun Dog Ranch Road. Work will include the installation of a new traffic signal system, as well as -- excuse me, as well as necessary road widening on Sun Dog Ranch Road and turn lane modifications on Prescott Lakes Parkway. There are some retaining walls and other pertinent improvements that go with this project. Public Works is currently working on acquiring the signal materials ahead of the project. One of the things we're doing to stay ahead of delays once we award a construction contract, so that process is already started. The project was advertised on November 5th and 12th, 2023. Two bids received on December 14th. Public Works is recommending the award of the low bid to Asphalt Paving and Supply in the amount of $1,208,791. Excuse me. The engineer's estimate for the project was $1,384,221.25. Staff has written -- received written confirmation of the bid from Asphalt Paving and Supply, verification of their license bonding. Past performance of previous municipal projects has been completed and deemed satisfactory. City's standard construction contract will be used for this project, and funding for the project is budgeted in FY '24 from the Streets Fund. And I will be happy to take any questions if you have some.
Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you, Tim. I think that the purpose of this traffic light is to anticipate increased traffic for not just access to the transfer station, but also for the Streets Department because they're going to be building a facility there where the
There's multiple uses there, yes. You have the Humane Society. You probably have, I would guess, if Joe Baines was here, you could confirm that, probably the busiest trailhead parking lot in the entire system, as well as city facilities, the fire training facility, the police training facility are both off Sun Dog Ranch Road. Streets is already on one side of Prescott Lakes Parkway. They're moving to the other side. So that's not maybe the biggest driver there. But traffic volumes have increased over the years. There was a warrant study that was done for this project. This intersection meets warrants on two counts. So it's in -- staff has determined that it's needed at this location.
And also, a majority of the vehicles turning into the transfer station are hauling trailers. And so that makes it
I don't know what the percentage of that is, but yes, there is a significant amount that do, yes. Including our -- the vehicles that haul the material out to Gray Wolf.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, mayor. Tim, I know this isn't maybe a popular subject with a lot of people, but have we looked at maybe doing a roundabout instead of a light? Because I personally would think a roundabout would be great there instead of another light.
And we did look at that, Councilman Moore. The right-of-way constraints there, as well as a extremely large drainage structure that runs diagonally under that intersection, kind of prohibited us from doing so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If there's no other concerns, any public comment?
No, mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve city contract number 2024-157.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
All right, very good. We'll move on to item 10E.
Approval of city contract number 2024-121 with Dancin' Construction LLC for the Streets Division Administration Building, Phase 1.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm back. This project is for a new Streets Division Administration Building to be located, as Councilman Rusing mentioned, along at the existing Sun Dog Wastewater Treatment Facility. The project will be located, as indicated on the site map. The city acquired the building components of a pre-engineered metal building from Tri-City Prep School in accordance with city contract 2023-066, which was a settlement agreement approved by council on September 27th of 2022. The building is 125 by 125, so approximately 15,625 square feet. Project -- the first phase of the project includes design work to construct the building components, which will include inventory of the existing materials, drainage analysis, utility investigations, geotechnical investigation, and various design functions, such as architectural, structural, electrical, plumbing, fire suppression, site work, slabs, aprons, parking, site walls, fencing, and lighting. Staff elected to use a design-build procurement process for this project. City requested statements of qualifications, what we refer to as an RSOQ. They were advertised on August 13th and 20th of last year. A mandatory pre-submital conference was held on August 30th, in which the submittal requirements and evaluation and selection process were explained in detail to the prospective submitters. The city received submittals from six firms on September 14th of 2023. Per ARS requirements, a select panel of six members conducted an extensive review of the RSOQ submitted, and the design-build team of Dancin' Construction and Killy Horn were ranked as the highest amongst the firms that submitted. Staff then entered into negotiations for a scope and fee for Phase 1, and Public Works is recommending a word of a contract to Dancin' Construction LLC in the amount of $554,010. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, mayor. So, Tim, I just have a question with the location of that building. Is that going to affect any of the current settling ponds at the -- or is there open land where that building is?
There's an open pad between where the new snow facility is located and the existing wastewater facilities.
Okay. So you're not to the point where you're going to be decommissioning these ponds at this point?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
We're fitting square pegs and round holes.
Councilmember Rusing?
This parcel of land is adjacent to the Watson Woods. Is this increased in -- increase having the Streets Division there and anticipate increased traffic, do you think it's going to impact Watson Woods negatively?
I'm not clear exactly where the Watson Woods designation is. This is on the south side of Prescott Lakes Parkway. So if somebody knows if Watson Woods extends, I knew you might know.
So, thank you, Kathy. That's a great question. I appreciate you asking that. The location of this building really won't affect Watson Woods at all. Watson -- the boundary for Watson Woods is on the west side of the settling ponds. There's currently a chain-link fence on the west side of the property, and Watson Woods is to the west of that. And this is significantly east of that. So I, as a naturalist, I would say it's not going to have any impact on Watson Woods, but it's a great question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Do we have any public comment?
We do not, mayor.
I'll entertain a motion. Oh, okay. Councilman Moore?
Sorry. Tim, I just want to question, because those settling ponds are going to be going away, do we have a master plan for the whole area? Because you just mentioned something that kind of made me -- you said putting a square peg and a round hole. It's like, I don't want to be putting a building here, and then five years from now, we're decommissioning ponds, thinking, well, what are we going to do with this area and this area and this area?
And that may not have been the best choice of words on my part. I'll be honest with you. Yeah, we're looking at what the future needs are at the facility now and trying to make -- and making things work in a way that will work, benefit us long-term as the plant does end up being decommissioned. So poor choice of words on my part.
Well, I would -- I think as a council member, I'd love to see like a plan for that whole area, like a master plan for this is how we're going to use this acreage in this area once that is decommissioned.
Yes, sir.
That's a great idea, Councilman Moore. Councilwoman Freworth?
Yes, building on what Eric had just said, and because of the vote we just took and having to figure things out, the question for me is, you know, do we need to make this decision today in criticality of us having to make tough choices over the course of the next few weeks and months? What's the downside of not approving this today?
It's budgeted for this year. This upcoming -- yes, it is budgeted in FY '24. This is not an unexpected expense. As always, it's council's discretion, but the money's available.
But it helped that you just said it's budgeted.
Yes.
And we own the building, but it'll have to be fixed. And then how much beyond the $554 will be put into next year's budget?
That'll be part of the process of going through the design, is determining -- one of the big components is going to be the inventory of the material that we have.
Okay.
Once we inventory that material and determine exactly what we have on hand, then that determination could be made a lot better, as well as understanding what the geotechnical requirements are going to be and utility components.
Good evening, mayor and council. Not to usurp Tim, he's doing a great job, but I'd just like to weigh in and say that this first phase of the project is going to answer a lot of questions for us. Because we inherited a building that wasn't designed or intended to be built for city purposes. And so we have some work to do to determine what modifications need to be made to the building, what kind of infrastructure we have to bring in in order to support the building. I think your comments on have we master planned street maintenance's needs is valid. That's a good question. We could perhaps integrate that into some of the work that we're going to do in here in Phase 1, which was budgeted for fiscal year '24, which is what we're in. In fiscal year '25, we have about $300,000 budgeted and an additional $300,000 in fiscal year '26. So as we move into fiscal year '25 budgeting, which Mark's going to kick it off tomorrow, at least at a staff level, we can talk with council about whether this is still a priority for them. But we do have this building, and it's not assembled. And the longer it sits in storage, the more it degrades. And we did buy And we did buy it for -- how much money did we buy it for? Does anyone know?
300. You're going to make me look.
So, I won't say that an eminent decision today is needed, but I will say that the longer we delay, the more the building degrades, and we have already spent 300-plus thousand dollars on the pieces of this building, and it's going to take us two to three years to erect it. So, do you have to make a decision right now at this very moment? You don't. If you'd like us to look into some more information that we haven't provided to you, but we do have a good, solid bid that we can use to bring more information back to you so you can make a decision during the budget process about what you want to do with this piece of infrastructure that we've already committed over $300,000 to. Okay? Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt, approve city contract 2024 -- no. Move to approve city contract 2024-121.
Second.
Third.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Very good. Now, we'll move on to our last item, 10F.
Adoption of resolution number 2023-182, amending city contract number 2021-090 and 2021-091, an intergovernmental agreement with Stringfield Ranch Domestic Water Improvement District of Yavapai County and the associated contract with Stringfield Ranch LLC.
Good evening, mayor and council. It felt so good to stand up, I decided to just stay. Gwen Roach, Public Works Director. The item in front of you this evening is to amend a contract that was entered into with the Stringfield Domestic Water Improvement District and a subsequent contract with Stringfield Development LLC. That contract was approved in February of 2021 in order for the city to provide water to 340 lots for the development of a subdivision to be known as Stringfield Ranch. In the original agreement, the developer was to build a water and sewer for the subdivision, and the city was to guarantee that we would provide for that 340 lots in our shared water supply and that we would provide capacity in our treatment plant in order to treat the sewer that was required to come back to the city after we sold them the water. In the original agreement, the developer was to build a water infrastructure and then dedicate it to the city for long-term operation and maintenance. They were also to build the sewer, primarily low-pressure sewer for the homes within their collection system and a sewer lift station. The LPS system was to be private in the original agreement. It's still recommended to be private. But the developer was also required to build a sewer lift station, sewer force main and gravity main that would take the sewer from the development to the city's wastewater treatment plant. Over the last year and a half, the city and the developer have had many discussions as to the design of the infrastructure to serve this development in terms of the water infrastructure in particular. The system that was designed by the developer resulted in what the staff considers to be higher than average maintenance costs. We came to an impasse as to whether the system as it was designed would be to the benefit of the city. And so I had a couple of conversations with Jeff Davis, who's the developer for this project, and suggested that he privatized the distribution system, the water distribution system for this development, and he agreed to do so. So the amendment in front of you this evening is to amend the language in the original agreement from the water distribution system being operated and maintained by the city in perpetuity to the developer operating and maintaining a private distribution system in perpetuity. In the original agreement with the Stringfield Ranch Domestic Water Improvement District, it was proposed that the district itself would manage the private sewer system in terms of operating it, maintaining it, et cetera, for the residents that would reside there. Because they have this district already formed, they have a mechanism in place to also maintain and operate the private water system. This would include such things as billing their individual residents, operating the system, paying electric bills, repairing the system as needed, providing ongoing maintenance, and ultimately replacement of the system when it's expended its useful life. On the developer's side, he asked me to mention that this simplifies the process for his homeowners. They now only have to deal with two entities, the county and their homeowners association, not the county, their homeowners association, and the city. In the amendment, the district is to manage the distribution system behind a city-owned and operated master meter. The developer is to construct the master meter and a backflow prevention device per city standards and the general engineering standards. The impact fees for the master meter are substantial, so the developer asks that they be prorated based on approval of final plats, which can be easily coordinated with the county. We also agreed that we would apply the average sewer volume by class for calculation of the monthly sewer volume charge. The way that our sewer rates are structured, it's based on a percentage of your water usage in the winter months. Every single home pays whatever their percentage of that is, but for those homeowners that don't have an established rate, the city adopts what it calls a citywide average by class. In this case, the homeowners within Stringfield Ranch subdivision would pay the average sewer usage volume by class in perpetuity. That amount is determined in April of every year. It's reestablished in April of every year and goes into effect in the May bill. The amendment also provides some clarification for when permits and inspections would be and would not be required, essentially only for the public infrastructure that they're building. And the developer would be required to report water losses to us, as that's a requirement that we have through the state of Arizona, for anything that does not go through the master meter. There is a representative for the developer here this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about this amendment. And I did put a map up on the screen just for reference in case you need it. The east-west road there is Pioneer Parkway. It crosses over Williamson Valley Road to the west, and this kind of darker gray shaded area there is Stringfield Ranch.
Councilmember Rusi.
Thank you. Gwen, now that the water system is being privatized, does that mean that the developer can use PVC pipe instead of ductile iron?
The development or the original agreement required him to build it with ductile iron pipe. It was before the city actually changed our code to require it. And in my discussions with Jeff Davis, he bought the pipe when it was a little bit lower in cost, so it's sitting there waiting to be installed. So, to my knowledge, he'll be installing ductile iron pipe because he's got quite a bit of it.
Great. And then also, we're basically just going to be selling him water, so will we be charging the 30% surcharge?
The agreement does contemplate the 30% outside the city limits fee on top of the master meter rate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen, based on the information that you've shared with us, everything seems like a very positive thing for the city. Do you see any downsides to this change in the agreement?
Staff fully supports this amendment to the agreement.
Thank you.
Councilman Gambogi.
Gwen, in a couple of sentences, could you restate what you're recommending in this proposal?
You'd like me to restate the main changes to the proposal? The main change to the proposal is that the distribution that serves the individual homes will now be operated and maintained privately by the Stringfield Ranch Water Domestic Improvement District.
This is for water?
This is for water. The sewer was always contemplated to be operated and maintained by the developer and the district, essentially, until it reaches a lift station, which the city will own and operate, and then it takes it from the site out into the city collection system and out to the treatment plant. So what we've done in this document is identify specifically which pieces of infrastructure will be public and owned and operated by the city and which will be private and owned and operated by the developer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gwen, can you define this reference to class? Because I've followed this development pretty extensively since it was first proposed, and I know the first phases are going to be in the much smaller lots. So obviously, the smaller homes will use less water and produce less effluent, and then when they get into the larger lots that are up on the hill, they're going to be substantially bigger. So how do you define class when you're going to be charging each one of these new homes a sewer rate?
Mayor, the definition of class is in the rates. It's in the city code. And the class for this development is single-family residential.
So it's a pretty broad class, then?
It is, but there is language in this code that relates to landscaping. They are required to meet our conservation and landscape requirements, so to use low-water drought-tolerant plants, to limit flora. There's language in their CCNRs to this effect. That's what we did to try to offset that, what your concern is.
So they have primarily a master meter, so the water district there will be billing their own individual homeowners based upon the master meter and what they use?
Yes, Mayor.
And then we'll have an individual sewer rate, and they'll pay the city?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. We have any public comment? Any other questions?
No public comment.
Very well, then we can move to a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 2023-1872, amending city contract number 2021-090.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Passes 7-0.
That concludes our voting agenda today. And considering the vast amount of public input that we've had, I thought this quote from the first chief justice of the Supreme Court and author of a number of the Federalist Papers, John Jay. "America belongs to we, the people. It does not belong to Congress. It does not belong to special interest groups. It does not belong to the courts. It belongs to we, the people." This meeting is adjourned.
Possible to hold off a second? This is just a technical issue. The contract, the original contract, actually has two city contract numbers. It has a number, 21-090, and 21-21.
It's okay. You moved to adopt the resolution, and that covers -- yeah.
Okay, I'm so sorry to interrupt. Thank you.